It is six thirty-four on Monday, July ninth, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. First on the agenda is our minutes from June eighteenth. Well, actually, it's a consent agenda that only includes our minutes from June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll, okay, go ahead. I'll second.
Any edits, questions, comments? So, the quick one comment that I have. Jen and Mike, I think we're not, we're not here.
I was not here. So I need to be marked.
I don't know if they are marked as absent, I didn't see that they were.
They're not, we are not.
Okay, if we could do that. Yep. Any other comments, changes, questions? Okay. So, we're gonna approve the minutes, or the consent agenda is amended? All in favor to approve the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You abstaining? Oh, you can, what if you want to? Just your, uh, Mike abstained. He wasn't here. He selected to abstain. Okay, visitors' comments? We have a visitor, but I don't think she wants to say anything. Good to see you again, Pam. Good to have you here. Come back more often, especially when the weather's not so stifling. Okay, going to new business, student handbook.
So I just wanted to let the committee know that in August, we will have both of the student handbooks ready for approval and updated. As you know, the high school had some changes to the program of study that would be included in the handbook. There's also changes to the tobacco policy that includes vaping. So, we will get those to you in advance, so you can review them. Not many changes to the elementary, because they had combined the handbook last year. But I just wanted to give you the heads up that it will be coming.
Okay. There is another term that escapes me completely that kids are using these days. And I can't remember, I wonder if there's anything I should have thought of that. When you said vaping, I just thought of that.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's one of those new things, maybe. Can we have enough time to review the student handbook? Because when it's, uh, a few, okay.
Yes, so they should be done next week, and our, my intent is to have them in the folder for the August meeting, the beginning of next week.
Okay, so we're gonna have plenty of time.
Yep. And I do believe that Ally and Bill were making the changes in color, so that you can track, we can track the changes.
Excuse me, Emily?
Yes.
Can we go back to just a minute, I do have a quick question.
Yeah, to, to what, visitors' section?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
I guess in May, at town meeting, one point three million, I believe, was taken out of stabilization cash for you to do approved.
Yes.
Is that correct?
One point four, I think.
Well, where did they get that number from? They can go out to bid here, did they, there's no RFP, do we have a contractor?
So, I don't know what the final numbers ended up being. We had, we had multiple bids at the time. Uh, but they were, they were really ranging, uh, it was a pretty broad range. So I don't know which one of those ended up being accepted, if any, yet. Uh, so I don't have a good answer. But the appropriated amount was one point four, I believe, one point four million.
So you have, you have a, um, a committee formed?
None yet.
Wait, you cannot do telephone calls on anything over five thousand dollars. So that's why I'm asking you, if you had a committee formed to figure out, um, to, to go out for RFP and hire a contractor, then the committee sits together, does another RFP to, to get the roofing company.
Yep, so I'll let Cheryl answer that.
So, this was a capital request that went as part of the capital plan. And so that was presented last year, and then again this year. And so this year, the roof was moved forward through the process. But to your point, correct, we haven't gone to the next step. So, all, what we have now are quotes, and I believe that's how Mr. Martin moved forward at town meeting. So we still have to go through the rest of the process.
So, Mr. Martin moved forward incorrectly. How do they legally?
Well, um, we still, we still have to have those conversations. I mean, we don't even know what we're talking about in terms of the amount, or timing, or anything like that, so yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, before you, in soup of actually had the committee formed first, and had the contractor, and had the bids, and then taking it to town meeting to say, okay, this is who the contractor's gonna be, this is who's gonna do the roof, this is how much it's gonna cost, and then we vote. So they actually had town meeting vote without even knowing what we were voting for. Unfortunately, I wasn't there in May, because leaving these questions would have been asked then.
Yeah. No, those are good questions. Pam, the thing is, I think they, you know, we, we do that for many items. I guess the approach was, we're gonna just take that amount, carve it out, and save it for the roof. As I said, we don't even know what the total amount is gonna be. That's how we took it. In fact, there were a lot of conversations around how, how, whether there are different ways to finance it, and what options we may have. We, we're not there yet, as Cheryl said, we'd never really got into those, those conversations. We only have the quotes, uh, the early quotes.
The other thing I'm understanding is that you only can, you only can do so much on the building percentage of it before you have to bring everything up to vote. So I'm understanding that the value of this building was, the assessor actually made it worth more than it really is worth, so that they wouldn't hit that mark of, I think it's twenty-five percent, before you have to do all the other work. My other question is, are you planning on using cash, or wouldn't it be better to borrow and have cash here?
Yeah, we, that, that's, that's basically, that's the conversation that we had over and over, and it was decided that it was gonna be free cash, and it was gonna be used out of cash.
To be honest, to be honest with you, Pam, here's how it went, and I'm just gonna say how it went, from our perspective.
Got it.
We put to, we put the request into the capital planning committee. And that was, we hadn't heard anything beyond that, and then...
And if I may, the year before, we had put an accelerated repair request in for the roof and windows through MSBA, and that was declined.
So, this request had been on the capital planning committee's, um, you know, request that we have to do annually for three years?
For three years?
And, yes, and...
Oh my god, it's gonna take three years just to get the roof funded, just so you all know, how long it's gonna take.
Yes, so when, so when we put the request in this past year, we, we didn't hear, it was sort of radio silence for a while, and then the next thing that we knew, the roof was approved, and it wa, there was an article for town meeting. And we didn't, as a school committee, have a discussion, so then we started asking the same questions. Why are we taking it out of free cash, you know, would it make more sense to finance a portion of this? And so, that's where we're at right now. We're, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse, and now we're playing catch-up.
Oh, the cards are already gone.
Yes, but the good news is, the good news is that there, there is funding available, and we're, it'll all be done properly and appropriately and legally, and, and...
So, you, are you, the school committee, going to put the committees together for the roof, to go out for the RFP for the contractor, and for the, are you guys gonna be in charge?
We di, we did not have that conversation yet, so we, we don't know.
No, we did not.
Well, see, the only reason why I'm asking is because the committee was formed to do the, to do the school over next year.
West Street.
That, East Meadow. And that was an ad hoc committee. None of them were voted by town people. So who actually paid the bills? You did, or did they have authority? Because they're not supposed to spend any money. And I don't understand why there wasn't more people from the school board sitting there, and then coming back. They were an ad hoc, once they had that in place, it should have come to your committee, and they should have said, this is our recommendation. But it, they should never have gone from dirt to roof. That's just, that's just not how it works under chapter forty.
So let me, let me tell you this then. So, I don't, we don't have all the answers to that. We will look into it, because we're not gonna be able to answer your questions here and tonight, we don't have...
But then through the roof project, once, yeah.
Right, so just, we have not, so we, you know, just, we have to obviously look into it and see what it is. But we know for a fact that we did not have any conversations since the, uh, since the town meeting yet, and, you know, the, it still has to take place, and, and we'll have more information at that time.
Well, I'm just asking, are you gonna take over more responsibility because it's your building? Are you gonna be in charge of this group?
Uh, I...
You're gonna give it to somebody else?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that yet.
But you are responsible.
If we are, then we will be part of it.
The town owns the buildings, so...
Yeah.
No, 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 you are responsible for the school building, you are the school committee. You are definite and top, you are, the board of selectmen are not over you. You are kind of beside them. So if they come in here and say to you, we want you to do this, this, or this, you can say, well, we'll think about it. But it is not their, it is not their purview over the school board.
Okay, so again, we will, we will look into that, and we'll, we'll find out what it is, and, you know, how much our moment is gonna be. We don't have the answer for you tonight. We can just talk all night about this, and we're not gonna get anywhere.
But I, but here, I don't understand why it happened with the school though. I don't understand why a, a committee who wasn't...
But again, that's a question I can't answer, that's what I'm saying.
But you were sitting, you were sitting on this board when that happened.
But I don't know the answer.
But what, why didn't you guys go under chapter forty? It's very easy, that's what this guy...
Pam, again, I don't have the answer, and we'll look into it, and, you know, I'm sure you'll be one of the first ones to find out about it. I don't have the answer. You're asking good questions, and I appreciate it, but if I don't have the answer, we can have this conversation all night, and you can ask the same question. I don't have the answer to it.
Okay, so, and this is my last question, and I'll go.
Sure.
Do you, as a school committee, work under Robert's rules and work under chapter forty? Those are the laws of the town.
Robert's rules are not part of the law, uh, but chapter forty, yes, we are.
But no, this is the way you're gonna do it. If you worked under chapter forty, then that would not have happened.
Yeah.
If you would have...
Again, it's the same thing. We will look into it, and, you know, we'll find out what our involvement level is gonna be, or has to be, and we'll, we'll do accordingly. I don't have the answer for you. Again, just, you know, we, good questions, but I don't have the answer right now.
But you do own the buildings, they are your responsibility. I know you don't believe me, but it's true. I sat on the board for six, for nine years.
No, just... It's, it's not, it's not, it's not not believing you, it's just that I don't know the answer to it.
No, I'm talking to Mike, he doesn't believe, he thinks that the town owns all these buildings.
That, that's Adam, our new, uh, new business manager, yeah.
And as I said, when it comes time to look at West Street School, uh, did you turn that back into the town, or is it still your property?
Which one?
We still oversee West Street.
We, we oversee, but we're gonna turn it to the town, it's not, it's, again, you, you are raising something I don't have an answer for, but I don't know that, that is how the town sees it. So whether, whether we just go ahead and do something that is completely against the law, or we get involved and do it is something different. But I know that the decision regarding West Street, and what's gonna be done with West Street, does not, currently at least, does not lie with us.
It does.
We'll find out, that's what I'm saying.
Is, I, excuse me, are you the superintendent?
Yes.
She did, she just said, you still own West Street School, you're still...
Well, until we release it, that's, you know, as long as it's a school building, yes, we do. But if, but the moment we just release it, correct me if I'm wrong, we release it and we're done with it as a school, school building,
Right, right.
it's, as, we were told at the very least that it's not really our property anymore. So maybe you're right, maybe it's something for us to learn, but I don't have the answer. Good question, thank you for raising it, and we'll find out about it.
But, because once they start saying that they're gonna work on that building, once money gets funneled over there,
Yeah.
money gets stopped funneling over here. And this building should come before that building. We have town, town buildings that we've been using, we could buy the telephone company cheaper, and we could, and they are at the senior center. That's the cheapest way to go. If it wasn't good enough to be a school, it certainly shouldn't be good enough to be town offices. And like I said, if the money gets funneled over there, then, then you guys don't get the money here. And that's where it needs to be.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Aren't you glad they can't?
Of course, no, I am. We don't, we don't mind the questions, it's just that we don't always have the answers. Otherwise, you know, we don't mind having the conversation.
Well, you know, if you go to the school committee, uh, it's in November every year, all the school committees...
Yes, we are going every year.
So if you go, you can learn an awful lot.
Yes.
And not even in those meetings, you, you've talked to other school board members, and you'll learn a lot.
Yeah.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks, Pam, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
We'll see you. Are, are we done with the student handbook?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, unless there were any other questions.
No, I don't think we have any questions. Anybody? No? Okay. Uh, parking policy.
So parking policy, um, the high school, um, in your folder has asked for some changes to the, um, fee structure, which would have to be approved by school committee. They would like to, uh, offer a split fee schedule for students who would like to park, or pay for parking after February. So, we have students who get their license in December, January, February, and instead of paying for the whole year, um, we would like to offer them a reduced rate for half the year. We find that we do lose students to, um, parking. They don't wanna pay the full year when they're not, you know, if they got their license in March. So, that is the recommendation. Um, and we're also using an online, um, uh, fee, just, this is just for F, for your information, um, an online pay, payment source.
So that's why you scratched out checks?
Yes.
I was, I was gonna ask that question.
Yes.
What is, so what's gonna happen now, since we're gonna have checks?
So we're gonna, uh, we're piloting Family ID, um, as an online payment source for, uh, sports and for fees this year only, with the anticipation that it could move forward and, um, help even at the elementary school with field trips, and any payment that, um, sta, uh, parents would like to make, and, um, even in the future, blending with the cafeteria payment.
Is there any cost to anybody?
Um, there wasn't an, a, a small startup cost, yes.
So, are we gonna have a conversation around those? I mean, is, is doesn't, shouldn't that ha, be part of our conversation, if we're gonna go into a new financial, uh, services? I mean, I'm assuming it's a service, right?
Right. I mean, we had the discussion at the leadership team, um, so I, I guess we were anticipating using the athletic revolving account. So, uh, we were gonna pilot it, and then see how it went for athletics.
What, what I'm, what I'm asking is, if we're gonna be using a new service,
Mm-hmm.
the service will have a contract, who's gonna be signing that contract?
Well, you give the superintendent permission to sign contracts, that's one of the things that you vote.
When do we do that?
You do that every year.
Okay, so we did not yet, that, there is no, uh, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, which one of these should go through the school committee?
Mm-hmm.
One is legally, the other one is at least for information purposes, so we have some say. And I'll be very honest, since you used the word pilot, since we had a disconnect on the pilot for the blizzard bag that we're gonna be discussing, I just wanna make sure that what we mean by pilot is really, you know, what we all mean. 'Cause eventually, the questions will come to us as well, probably more so than, uh, the, the, uh, the admin team. So I wanna be, I would like to be aware of what changes are, uh, coming through. Of that type of financial services, card swipes, this and that, it's not always the easiest thing people get used to, or like. And I would like to understand what, what that entails, uh, from a user's perspective.
Okay. So I can have, um, Ally come and present?
That would be great.
Okay.
So I, uh, did you have anything else on that?
I, I had a, a question on that. I was a little confused when I read it, just on the last bullet, that's where you're adding the, when the online application to a Family ID is completed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where is it introduced to the students that it's paid online? I mean, how do they know about that? Do they, when they're requesting a, a parking permit, do they walk into the office and say, I want a parking permit, and then somebody says, okay, you have to go online, and, okay?
Yep.
So I, I had a, since we are revising this form, a few things, uh, you know, on my reading, I thought may need some, uh, explanations, a little more detail. Like, we're talking about contraband, but we don't know what that really means. It could be probably anything, and we wanna make sure...
Uh, which bullet?
It's, it's not a bullet, it's actually the part that existed before, it's the first paragraph that starts with, I understand the parking, and then the third sentence, third line in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause I, I, you know, I, I always look at anything, regulation, law, whatever, clarity as to what something means, before we can really impose it. So contraband is not, was not clear. Um, the other one... So all school, uh, all school rules apply to students while they are in their vehicle on school property. I think that IE is EG, 'cause it's an example, right? It's not, we don't, we don't just mean smoking in the, in the vehicle. I may be wrong, I'm, I'm asking.
I think for clarity, we will just say for example.
Yeah, well, because, then IE is not, is not for example, that is, yeah, okay, so we should, thank you.
Exactly, right. Yes.
Truancy, is that really something common, and we want, we know and use it, but absenteeism, isn't it clear for students as opposed to truancy?
Yes.
Do they understand what truancy means?
Yes.
All our students?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and I...
We have a truancy, we have an attendance officer, so if we are finding that a student is truant, we actually reach out, um, through our attendance officer and go over the expectations, and particularly at the high school, where students will lose credit.
Is it the same thing as absenteeism?
I think truancy falls into, right.
Truancy is skipping school, and skipping class, and...
Yeah, truancy, yeah, it implies, um, uh...
Infraction.
Yeah.
That's good, that means I'm the, I was the only one who did not really, uh, know all the meanings of it. Because I, you know, on anything, again, that's my pet peeve too. If there is a better or clearer way of saying something, I just...
No, I think truancy is pretty clear.
It's in the student handbook, what, um, the expectations are, yeah.
All right, well, it doesn't mean that, doesn't mean, that, that doesn't mean that it's clear to everyone, since it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, hopefully, I'm not the only person in town who doesn't understand it, but, uh, I mean, I, I, I heard the word, I knew it was related to absenteeism, but I always took it as the same as absenteeism, so...
This is a credit to the timeliness of your children, who came through the school system and you never got the call.
I like that, I like that.
Okay, because I'm nodding.
We know exactly what it is. Your child is in danger of...
So, the, the, the last bullet in black before that one that says add, any changes to vehicle identification must be made at the main office, and not to the main office?
Okay.
So Alex is here, we can start the meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Okay.
If we can have a conversation on the, the payment method.
Sure.
Do they really get to choose a parking spot? Is there like a map that has a name? Okay. So it's like our dock map.
Are they gonna let them decorate them, see, the kids?
We have... No, it, that's one of those things that's...
I know, it can invite a lot...
Environmentally, I don't know, so there, we're investigating the potential for a pilot, no, I'm just, you know, just investigating, maybe.
Yeah.
It just sounds fun.
But I know they get, they get attached to it.
Yes.
When we came for an event, there was nobody in the parking lot. Annabelle went and parked in her own wad, instead of parking in a closed wad. Their own spot.
We're creatures of habit.
Yeah. Great, anything else on this?
No, I think we beat that one to death. I think we can move on now.
Yeah, I...
It's a good thing it's a short agenda.
Yeah. I, I beg to defer that we did, uh, I think, you know, I guess...
I'm coming up to speed, I forgot that there were, there will be questions, so...
These are seeming the minor things, but we, because we have a lot of big things, we, we've been going over the minor things quickly, and I think we should just start updating certain things. Uh, wellness policy.
Right, so the wellness policy was in your hand, was in your, um...
Yep.
Uh, packet last time, we had our first reading, so, um, unfortunately Nancy can't be with us tonight. So I don't know if there were any further questions, we would have to table unless you were ready to take a vote on the wellness policy.
So I was good with it last time, I don't remember if there were any other questions from the committee last time, if...
No, I was good, I was, I reread it again, and it's very thorough.
Very well written, too, I think.
Yeah. This is great.
This, this is actually very well done, I, I completely agree with that. All right, so, um, do we have to...
I say we vote on it?
Vote, yep, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion, question? Edit? No? Uh, Deanne made a motion. You're welcome, thank you. All right, all in favor to approve, the wellness policy, please, updated wellness policy, please say aye.
Aye.
He's been blinded for the last twenty minutes. I don't know if it'll come down. Oh, that's really... Sorry.
Now, now he will stay for the duration.
Probably like a nice Teflon comb with her.
Poor Mike, I'm like, what's my doodle, oh, he's in the sun.
I was smiling.
I thought it was in pain. Uh, new subcommittees. Do you want me to?
Yes.
Present this one, so, um, we, we have been talking about subcommittees, uh, before, but, um, again, as we're having our bigger discussions about, uh, a lot of big issues, we kinda postponed some of these conversations. Two committee, two subcommittees, uh, are especially, from my perspective, that's why I wanted to bring it up, and then for a discussion, and if there is any vote, uh, to create them. Two subcommittees, I think, will be critical. One is the community relations committee, which I spent some time investigating, uh, last week. Many school committees, um, have it, uh, and they seem to be doing exactly what we would like to do. That's basically the body, the sub-body of the school committee that is leading some of the efforts to connect with the community, to the school community, to the overall community, you know, creating a plan around what the communication, uh, will look like, uh, creating a strategy, and then comes to the school committee, and then school committee approves and hopefully embraces that approach for communication purposes. Something that we talked about, but we don't really have a structure around it, I think, uh, this subcommittee may help. The second one is related to budget, uh, budget subcommittee. Uh, again, we talked about it, the one reason why we, one of the reasons why we kinda pushed it out and postponed, uh, this conversation was the fact that we all really wanted to understand the budget process, we wanted to be involved in it, we wanted to, uh, be part of the conversation as they were happening. Uh, but I think there's a lot, uh, more that can happen and can benefit the, uh, overall committee if some pre-work is done, uh, some conversations potentially with, with Adam, with you, maybe, uh, all together, and then bring some, uh, ideas, suggestions that are, uh, a little, uh, more mature for the, for the overall committee, the full committee to review, and then have a conversation on it. So I wanted to propose that we create a communication, uh, community relations committee and a budget subcommittee. So I wanted to propose that we create a communication, uh, community relations committee and a budget subcommittee. And then I'll open it to discussion.
Can I, and so there would be three subcommittees because we currently have policy.
Yes.
So I just wanna make sure.
And that's gonna, that's gonna go on hiatus hopefully soon enough, right, except for some stuff.
It, the, the large work of this, of the policy subcommittee, yes, but, um, MASC will produce yearly the updates, so that committee would most likely be a one and done
Right.
with, once the entire policy is, um, manual is redone, revised, yes.
Yeah.
Are we mostly done with that?
Yes, two thirds, yeah.
Yeah. I think we have three sections left.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two of the sections that we completed, the thing is, I don't recall having voted on every single one of those sections that we, yeah.
I have to go back to the chart we made, because I tracked when we had the first reading, the second reading, and then the vote, and you're right, I, off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Yeah. Right. 'Cause I think that's a fair question, because we, we did not present-
It is.
Yeah, like, there was like one group that we haven't, that we worked on, but we haven't presented yet, to, to be appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah. 'Cause two of the sections were really the lengthy ones, and we did not really go over those yet, and we should.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And wrap it up before the school year starts.
I was just gonna say, we should probably do this before it then got started the next school year.
Yes. Yes. That's my goal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
And it'll, there are some pretty significant changes coming from MASC, so.
We only have two meetings left, so before school starts.
We have, how many? I thought it was one.
Eight six and eight twenty-seven.
Two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and these, and the new, uh, subcommittees, community relations and budget, would start with the new school year, or as soon as we vote?
I would say as soon as we vote, because, uh, those committees will have to be ready to go, and especially since Adam is coming on board, if there is anything that we can do to help support, learn.
Yeah, so in my experience, on budget and finance subcommittees, um, they only usually meet during the budget building, um, of obviously the next fiscal year. Um, and when we're outside of that period, I would obviously provide you guys with budget updates in full committee, but if you'd like to have those updates in a subcommittee, and then we can bring them to the full committee, that, that's entirely up to you guys. Just in my experience, the subcommittee is usually during the budget building process.
Makes sense, so that would be starting around, say, February, March?
Right, so that, yes, that, that'd be typical i- in, in wanting to start it up and get some information, you know, we could, we could have them whenever.
And, yep. And I think one of the, one of the things that, um, Adam and I have been talking about, which may allow the budget subcommittee to start earlier, would be to have the discussion, um, in subcommittee about how the school committee would like the budget information presented. How would you like it tracked? You, do you want, um, uh, budget to actuals, quarterly, do you want, um, cost center analysis, do you want trend, like, so all of those things, I think,
Mm-hmm.
can be worked out now in subcommittee and talked about, and sort of, we can do some, we can do some pre, we can do some, um-
I think we have a fine ear.
At least somebody's happy, just please continue.
Yeah. I know, I just made, alright, I think, but anyway, so I think that's, uh, the good use of a subcommittee now, with Adam coming on, um, that, and it's good work to do now over the summer, um, as Adam gets his feet wet with both FY eighteen and FY nineteen, and then, I think, we'll have a strong foundation moving forward as to how to present the information, not only to the school committee, but to the community as well. Um, are we presenting in ways that is, that is understandable, that, that people understand, um, because clearly, a list of the LBA, you know, lines-
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
With no discussion really is not helpful, so, um-
Never works, never works for us.
So, I, I'm, I'm on the same page, um-
So I like, I like the pre-work piece, because, I'll be honest with you, a lot of the stuff that was presented last year didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me in the context that it was being presented.
Right, I'll take that.
I felt like I had to ask the same question.
We tried. Yeah, yeah.
Like, what is, what, where were we last year at this time, was like my favorite question, I guess, because it was never there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know one thing that we've been asking for, for, since I've been on the committee, is, uh, just narrative.
Yeah.
You know, easy to understand phrases of why something changed so dramatically, so I'm not having to go through every line, 'cause it, I'm not a budget person, I'm not gonna lie.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I want simple, but I'm smart enough to know when something-
Something doesn't look right.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, I, I understand.
Yeah, for the most part, things kind of flow kind of straight during the year, unless you have an unexpected thing, and then that's what we want the answers to, right?
Right.
Um, but it was never presented in a way where we could see it flowing straight.
So to, to your point, I, I, I agree that, you know, some of the things need to be standardized, and, you know, some conversation around that, that's, that's gonna be important.
Mm-hmm.
Not having to ask the same question over and over type of thing, and, uh, we're, we're probably a little ranting, but. Uh, going back to your point, when, when do you start your planning around the budget?
To be honest with you, I've already copied FY nineteen's budget and started an FY twenty, really, really thirty thousand foot level projection. I'm always gonna be looking down the road, but for us to all get into it.
Right. So I just wanna, and that's, that-
I would say, no, that's okay, I would say November, December-ish, that might be on the little later side, only because it'll be my first time here doing it, um, so I might get into a little more of it, you know, late fall. Um, but I, I probably wouldn't need everybody on board, on board until probably November, December-ish.
Yeah, and that's exactly where I was going, February, I think is gonna be late.
Oh, yeah.
So for, for the budget co- subcommittee even to get involved.
Oh, yeah.
So let me just clarify our typical approach, this, we, we at least try not to get too involved to the point of micromanaging things.
Mm-hmm.
But we also, as a committee, ask a lot of questions, especially when we don't understand, we ask a lot of questions.
Mm-hmm.
As you can tell.
I found that out pretty quickly, yeah, that's, that's, that's fine, I, I understand.
It's gonna be fine.
I, I get it, I get it.
So for that reason, I think
We're likeable, though.
There will be a lot of benefit in, at least this year, maybe, you know, the net first couple of years for that committee really becoming the, the arm of this full committee
Yep.
to better understand what things are, what is expected to be included in the narrative, the explanation, um, then we can see what else we can do, but it's not really with the intent of
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
overseeing every single step that you are taking or Cheryl is taking, it's with the intent of really un- understanding to be able to explain to everyone else who's asking.
And I, I, I totally get that, I remember in that second inter- interview that you were there, you said that you guys never had a budget subcommittee, I'm thinking to myself, well, how the heck do they operate, you know, like, that, just something in my profession that I've always been accustomed to, so. Yeah, so maybe this year in starting the subcommittee, we can start earlier, um, but I would say in, you know, future years, the budget process doesn't really start until that first budget committee, subcommittee meets, and, you know, we kind of outline where we wanna go, what we want things to look like, and that would pretty much kick off the budget process.
Okay.
But I get, this year, we can, we can really start that, whatever, whatever.
But I'd like to, I'd like to spend some time trying to figure out what you can produce that tells the story in a way that-
I'd like to spend some time doing that, too, um. I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, the spreadsheet that, um, the, the previous company people had is a little, um, intimidating and overwhelming, only because there is no narrative to it, I guess, and it's kind of hard, I'm finding like formulas hooked to other things, and I, and it just, so I, I have to work my way through that first before I can speak to it. Um, and also, the software system that we use is very, very, um-
Challenging.
challenging, to be fair, um, so those are two of the biggest obstacles, I can, at this point, produce some very basic reports to provide the committee on, um, a monthly basis, either it's the first meeting or the second meeting of the month, typically, in my experience, it's the second meeting, um, but we can decide on, on when, but it's usually once a month. Um, and it can be just real basic or really detailed, however you, you guys would like to see that information.
I don't think it, it matters to us which meeting, but once a month.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, oh, certainly, definitely, definitely, yeah.
So I have a question on the Softwareate system, is that something that you're familiar with?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not, but I wasn't familiar with LBA when I got here, and I'm glad I'm not familiar with it, 'cause it is really bad, so I really wouldn't mind switching to something else.
Well, that, the, the town, the town approved by town meeting, a new software system
But-
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
that was supposed to unify the s- the school district with the town.
Yep.
Yeah, so that, that's, yeah, that's one of the problems, it, you, you kind of wanna be working on the same system as the city, or as the town, so if, if they have some pushback on, on implementing something new, uh, it's-
Three years ago. Three years ago.
That is, the pushback has been the, the labor involved in unifying the system.
So it's, and it was, you probably, you guys probably had the conversation, it was related to the codes, translating the codes, really, the, um, we just desk codes.
I've really lost track of where we are in the process, so it's probably a good, um, uh, conversation point when we do meet with Chris for the first time, to find out where we are.
Yeah, we can, we can ask. Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I do think that everybody recognizes that LBA, um, has become more problematic the further out we get from the decision to implement Softwareate. Um, so, uh, it will be helpful, um, and hopefully with, uh, with Adam being here, and I don't think we introduced Adam.
I, I did, prior to the meeting, yeah, I, yes.
No, I was fired to the meeting, yeah.
But I was like, um, this is Adam, he's, uh, uh, our new business manager, so Adam Tarquini, welcome.
Yes. Thank you, hey, I, I would say for me, because I'll be living in a system daily, I'm, I, I would prefer something that is easy to navigate through, um.
As would we.
Yeah, so, um, I, you know, I can help, I can help push the issue.
Right, so that was my point, is that with Adam being here full-time, it may be a partnership with Chris to actually have Adam, some of Adam's time, work towards implementing Softwareate.
Mm-hmm.
Because it has been a time factor, um, certainly, in trying to get our line items and our codes to match, um, because school finance is completely different than town finance, and the codes are different and all of that, and we do have to be very careful when we do that initial input, so it is a, it is a conversation point with Chris, um, during our first meeting, how we can be helpful, and set the expectation again that this really does need to happen, because it will in fact make us more efficient, um.
But I was under the impression that the biggest obstacle was somebody had to go in and manually input these, I mean, I can't imagine that is the best use of Adam's time or the best use of our time in paying Adam to be implementing.
Right, but if it's, if it's something that, you know, we need to get done, we need to get it done.
If it, if it's gonna be the end point, regardless of who's gonna be manually entering it, whether it's Chris, Adam, or me, or you, anybody, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's waste, I mean, there is waste involved in that type of manual entry translation, I'm not sure whether or not it was the entry part, it was the translation part of it that was done manually.
Right.
And, uh, if there's any way we can help to expedite the implementation of the software, I think, uh-
Right. Right.
I would disagree, that is, that is a, that transition will be difficult and time-consuming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but you do all that work upfront, or add up the time that I spend in LBA now trying to figure it out, and it's, it, you'd save-
Mm-hmm.
It comes to wash at that point.
Yeah, yeah, it's just not, this is not efficient.
Yeah. And now's the perfect time to tackle something like that.
Especially with you new coming in, to learn a new system, get everything, it's also a way you're gonna see every single thing that's in there, because you're gonna have to touch every item.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And the big thing is, is we want that system to translate into the end of year report, and I know at least LBA, one of the benefits now is it, it does, everything that spits out goes right directly into our end of year report. So that is a good thing, but going to a new system, we have to make sure that those accounts still translate into the end of year report, it, I don't think, I think wasting our time discussing it now, but it's certainly something that we can talk about, Chris, and hopefully, you know, keep pushing them on it and get it done.
So if you don't, you, you moved my clock, uh, if, we can go back to the agenda item, and we can, uh, get back to this conversation later if you would like, um, is
I can hear it.
Two subcommittees proposed, but we should talk about them and vote on them separately, the first one is the community relations subcommittee, is there a, uh, I think we do make a motion to create these, right, so just, uh, is there a motion to create a community relations?
Mm-hmm.
Can we go, can we just talk about, we got pretty into the budget one, but what exactly are you en- envisioning for the committee, I mean, I know you, what you were saying about having that, um, be a bridge, but what, what is like the expectation, what, I, I don't know, would it be additional meetings, like where, where would you go, or how would it work, that's, um, 'cause I'm still trying to learn and figure everything out.
I think that's what we expect the committee, subcommittee to figure out and come back to us.
Committee to figure out, okay. I got it, makes so much more sense now.
But the, but the whole, no, that's a good question, though, uh-
No, it is, yeah.
Because, I mean, when you're proposing that, like, the budget one is pretty self-explanatory, you're like, you're gonna be meeting with somebody, but when you're talking about a community relations one, who is it that you're going to be reaching out to and to talk to, I mean, that's where I'm coming from.
So- So, I gave you the updated poster, um, that we will be using to, um, communicate the strategic plan, and so, um, if you look, we have, uh, celebrate successes and engage community. Um, I believe that really, um, could encompass the work of, um, the administrative team and this subcommittee to really focus on developing that community, uh, the, our ability to effectively communicate what's happening in the Grand Republic schools, um, to the community.
Mm-hmm.
But they wouldn't be necessarily responsible for it, they'd just be responsible for coming up with strategies.
Nope. Right.
To make them, okay.
Yep. Yeah.
That's what I, that was one of my questions.
Maybe engaging volunteer, you know, like, there's, you know, reaching out to PTO, whatever the strategies are, that would be the work of the committee to develop those strategies.
Got it.
So, would, um, the, so community relations would, could we get students involved, and doing maybe some reach-out programs with the senior center?
Yeah, absolutely, those kinds of things, absolutely, and I think, you know, to Emery's point, reaching out to the universities to see if we can have some interns in, actually helping manage, develop some of our platforms,
Um- Okay.
because we are just chronically understaffed there, and, you know, we don't wanna take time away from instruction, and that's where we're finding it so difficult to get our great message out to the community, because we're doing great things, and unfortunately, it's when we have time to get it up on Facebook, or when we have time to get it up on the webpage, and, and that's really unfortunate, because there's so many good things happening. Um, and often it's a week or two after, and we're missing the buzz, and we haven't tweeted, and we, you know, and we recognize, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so you need like some student writers to write some articles, get a blog back up, get-
Mm-hmm. Right, right.
Yeah, is there a student newspaper anymore, no?
Um, it's actually a magazine, yeah, so it's a-
Magazine, yeah. Quarterly or something.
I don't know, I think it's a half year.
So just, that, that's, this is good conversation, but just to make sure on both of these subcommittees. We're, we're a policy committee, in essence, right, so I'm having almost the same conversation at my other board, uh, when we meet.
Right.
Where, where is that line between operational and, and policy? So engaging someone with the intent of, uh, uh, using their assistance for curriculum purposes, this and that, I would actually look to you and the admin team to, to do that.
Right. Right.
We don't really have that visibility or purview in my mind to say, this is who we found, and this person's gonna help with this or that.
Right. Right.
But we can be the bridge to reach out to the, uh, five colleges and others to see what we can do as it relates to our relationship with the community.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
You know, maybe we can just be informed about some adult education that, you know, that we can bring back, but I would, operational side would still fall on
Mm-hmm. Yes.
on, on the admin teams, I just wanted to-
Yeah, yeah. And I think when you look at the, the strategic plan, you know, offer innovative and continuous learning experiences, to your point, that's really the purview of teachers
Make that clear.
working with staff, paraprofessionals, working with the leadership team to understand that, develop that, and then present, like, changes in program of study to the school committee. Um, with research behind that, say, this is why we're doing, or recommending this to the school committee, and, and then having the discussion here.
So, just so I'm clear, the, this subcommittee is developing a strategy for how we are going to um, go into the community, advertise, you know, our schools, promote the schools, it's not actually implementing anything, it's, first of all, we have to develop a strategy for how we're gonna do that.
Right now.
It's like the brain trust.
Yeah.
And even-
And then bring it back to the full committee for us to vote on, and say, here is going to be our strategy, and then the next part will be, how are we gonna go about implementing it?
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah, ju- just to, uh, clarify that one as well, that's exactly what I'm thinking, but in terms of the approval of the strategy, that falls on the full committee, that, that's why the subcommittee only has-
Yes, that's why I'm saying, then they bring it back to the full committee, we have discussion, tweak it, just like we did with the strategic plan, and we vote on it, and then it's, our, how we're gonna go about this now.
Yep. Yes. Yes. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. So any other comments, questions, okay, so is, is, was there a motion to create a, uh, committee?
No, I stopped you, sorry.
Actually, no, that was-
I'll make a motion.
Okay, actually, no.
Okay, so, Mike made the, made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, any more discussions, questions, all in favor to create the comm- you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, the motion is to create these two Subcommittee's.
Just the first one first, and then we can have that one, so, um, all in favor to create the Community Relations Subcommittee, please say aye.
Okay, gotcha.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now to the Budget Committee before we staff these Subcommittee's. Um, any, first of all, is there a motion to create one, we can decline it if we want to, okay.
Motion. So much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussions, any concerns, objections for Budget, should we call Budget and Finance Subcommittee? Yeah, we'll call Finance, Finance Subcommittee.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, all in favor to create a Budget and Finance Subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now going back, is there an interest in, uh, anyone, uh, in Community Relations?
I'd be.
Subcommittee.
We are.
The Jans, the Jans, the wonderful.
Wonder Twins.
Chans.
Hours of activity.
All right.
Beautiful.
I actually just wrote the Jans.
All right, so the Jans will be our Policy Sub, I mean, uh, Community Relations Subcommittee, how about?
Fantastic.
Can you get T-shirts? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Can I be Jen two? Two's my lucky number, you're totally down with it.
Just make sure that you have something that says paid, paid for by the Jans Committee or something, so that we know.
Donations.
So we don't get in trouble with that, um, how about the Budget Subcommittee, any interest?
I'd like to be on it, but I know, I thought you would like to be on it, and if you wanted to be on it, then I would.
I just don't know if I can do one more committee. I think I'm deferring to Emery, cause, you know, don't you wanna be on another committee, Emery?
Yeah, I, I just, this is my new thing, I'm just, uh, I know that everyone's gonna do a great job, I don't have to be part of every single Subcommittee, um, so, if, but if we don't have two, I will, I will go in.
Do I kinda like to be on this one, because I was really frustrated last year.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Mike, and who else would like to be nominated, actually, we need to vote for you guys too, yes.
Oh, I thought we had pretty universal.
Well, we're still, uh, still doing the economic development, whatever work.
Yes. Uh, it, it's completely understandable if you don't think that you may not have time for it, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to.
Okay, so I will, I will, uh, uh, express my interest in, on being there unless you ladies have any, okay?
I'm excited.
I can't do two.
All right.
Yeah.
So, let's just, uh, um, they self-nominated, all in favor to approve Jen and Jen for the Community Relations Committee, please say aye.
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 I'm on Pod Pums.
Uh, all in favor to approve Mike and me for the, uh, Budget Subcommittee, Budget and Finance Subcommittee, please say aye.
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 Aye, all right, congratulations.
I have a, I have a re- a favor, a request, um, who is on Policy now?
Yes. That's actually where we're going, we have two, two more things to do.
Oh. Okay, good.
I was on Policy, but then I.
Yes.
Couldn't remember.
So. I don't wanna speak on your behalf, so.
That's okay. I mean, I'll finish, cause we're so close to finishing, you know, I'd rather not, as I, I just started a new job, that's taking up a lot of time. So if someone else wants to hop on to finish the policy stuff up, that'd be awesome, but if not, I'll finish.
I'm on it, and I haven't seen, I don't know, right, so, brand new.
That's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you don't know, because, uh, we don't wanna discourage you.
I mean, we can probably just finish it up and maybe just tack on the Community Relations stuff.
Okay.
Uh, if you feel like you can't, then let us know, then I can jump back on it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I think we'll, it'll be fine.
Okay.
So I will reach out to you this week and just see what dates you might have, um.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
So, so you guys are on the Policy Subcommittee?
You make some pretty free.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a Jen Durban.
Yeah, but that really should wrap up.
Yeah, we're pretty close.
Yeah.
In September, by September.
I think, I think it's about three.
Why don't we make sure it wraps up?
And then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna. Cause we don't wanna overload and burn, burn anybody out.
With Annabelle doing all that work that she had done, I mean, we were just basically.
Right. Right, and it may be that we get it approved, and then I take another student intern and get it formatted, so
Mm-hmm.
if we can get through the approval process, then, then we'll, um, have it formatted and then get it uploaded, uh, cause it's, right now, it's in a few different pieces, so.
Okay, so one last item, going back to your new job and two Subcommittee's. Again, not to speak on your behalf, Jen and I had a conversation, just to, uh, maybe take one thing from her to give her some relief.
Mm-hmm.
Jen, yes, okay, just one, at least I want you to know, all right.
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm listening.
So she had, she had very kindly, uh, jumped on the Vice Chair role, but, uh, she, as we spoke, she's gonna have a lot of time at work, and the Subcommittee's and, uh, some of the things that she's doing, so we will basically do a swap of that role, and I, uh, thought that Deanne had expressed an interest, and now that she doesn't have anything on her last year with us, but if you stay another year, we're not gonna give it to you. Um, if you're still interested, we can swap that, okay, so now everybody can have a role on the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
So, are you not, because of what I said, are you then?
Yeah, so I'm stepping down as, as a, as a Vice Chair, yeah.
Reason I need, okay, you're stepping down, okay. So I will nominate Deanne to take the Vice Chair role, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor to, uh, approve Deanne as the Committee Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This was the most complicated item on the agenda. All right, thank you, everyone. Adam, actually, I'm looking forward to the Budget stuff, I'm really curious about the Community Relations thing, and it's something that we all care deeply about.
Yeah.
But the Budget, the narrative, going beyond the spreadsheet, being able to understand and explain to all those folks who are asking us the questions, cause
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
you, i- if you watch our meetings.
Yep.
You will find out that, mm, uh, all of us spent a lot of time in spreadsheets trying to decipher and understand, so that we would be at least somewhat versed in explaining what's.
Yeah, that's just, just a waste of time.
Right.
There's, um, there's this award called the Meritorious Budget Award, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with it, um, uh, sponsors it, and, uh, we did it in Springfield, uh, we did it in Hampton Wilbraham, um, and it pretty much, it, I don't wanna say this, it, it dumbs down the spreadsheet and puts it into narrative form, into, yeah, into, um, in, into a, um, you know, it, it tells the story of the district.
Now you're speaking my language.
You know, there's some numbers in there, but it, it more or less tells the story in words of what those numbers mean.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, this year, it might, th- there's a lot of work that goes into it, ASBO outlines everything that you need to put in, if you miss a period, a semicolon, you won't get the award, they'll give you great feedback, and sorry, but try again next year, um, so, for the FY twenty budget, I'm not so sure I'm gonna have the time to, um, do that, but it, it is something beyond FY twenty that I will, um, apply for, it might be something we might not get for three years, because they might give us feedback for three years saying, you know, you need some more work on some narrative on the town side, or something like that, um, but it's, it's certainly something that, um, we will get eventually in the district, and it will help tell the story of those spreadsheets, because you guys don't have time to sit here and try to see what the account number is, and that, that's just a, that's just a waste of time.
Right. So here's, here's something for you then.
Mm-hmm.
If we have words this year.
Yep.
We're not gonna worry about the commas or periods, you know, we'll, we'll be, we'll be good.
Okay.
Well, I like to see the numbers, I just need the context.
Yeah, we, yeah, like our numbers too.
Yeah, yes, yes, yep, certainly.
All right, thank you, everyone, now. The, the cool subject of the day, oh, is that a true, Blizzard Bag.
That's a really good pun.
Yes.
Yes, nice transition.
You're welcome.
The writing teachers would be proud.
I had some of the best ones here.
Uh, so I included in the folder, the Blizzard Bag survey that was, uh, results that were in your folder, uh, when this was originally new business. Um, also the Blizzard Bag comments from the students, I believe, and, um, Emery put the Blizzard Bag survey responses in an Excel spreadsheet, um.
Oh, did I?
Yes.
Oh, it's Google, whatever they call it, Google Sheets or whatever, okay, yeah.
Oh, Sheets, Google Sheets, you have to be careful with that one, um, so, I know the committee wanted to have a discussion, uh, about the survey results, um, so.
Yep. All right, so, um.
Happy to answer any questions, if I can.
So, I guess I'll start.
Please do.
Um, in reading through some of these responses, uh, I kinda hit home with some of the things I was thinking about as a parent, um, my, my thought was, obviously, that since last year was a pilot program that we approved, I think, September, October timeframe, and, and, and this was kind of moved along relatively quickly, that, um, we would learn some lessons, and then revise how we approached it again this year, so
Mm-hmm.
I guess my question is, have you already been thinking about how that revision would be, and do you have any insight as to some of the things you'd, you'd like to change on them, just, just so that I would, I would know?
Sure, um, so the teachers did spend some time, um, in the first, uh, one or two Blizzard Bag days, um, receiving feedback from fa- from families, uh, receiving feedback from students, um, trying to gauge the level of work, uh, the amount of work, and whether students could complete that independently, and their, um, family's accessibility to teachers during the day, um, so adjustments like, um, making sure that the work, um, was, that mo- that students would be able to complete the work during the assigned period, um, one of the things that, uh, we allowed was for students to complete the work after, so they had five days to complete the work, which really allowed people, the freedom, families and students to enjoy a snow day, like they always had, but just make sure that the work was turned in, and once the work was turned in, that was their attendance, um, and so, that's how we mo- we developed that process this year, and that's how we monitored attendance, and our attendance on Blizzard Bag days was, uh, similar, if not better, than normal, uh, attending school days. Um, some of the things that we are looking at are, um, how to use our service providers, so speech, OTPT, um, and also how to ensure that students, if they are in a rotation at the elementary school for PE, gym, or music, or art, how are we making sure that those lessons are provided to them, um, in meaningful and impactful ways, um, I think one of the things we learned also was Google Classroom can be incredibly powerful uh, for students, um, and can provide the ability for students to respond to each other, and for teachers to easily respond to students, but that doesn't necessarily reach down into kindergarten, grade one and grade two, um, so, those are some, some of the things that we learned this year.
Would you, um, I guess you guys don't mind if I ask another question?
No, no.
Would you also be taking a look at, um, when and how those were, uh, the, the work for that day was devised and put into the folder, because it seemed like some of that was maybe outdated or not relevant at the time?
Yeah, some of the feedback, yeah, so the teachers are gonna get the feedback as well, um, one of the concerns at the high school was that it felt like additional homework, and that was never the intent, um, so we have to bring that back to the high school folks, and at the elementary that it was, s- it was so, it was done so, and this was for the high school too, it was done so far in advance that it felt isolated from what they were learning, um, and that certainly was not the intent, um, so, those are definitely two things that the teachers will be addressing as they create them, um, for next year, if, if we move forward with the.
And I would like to see, just again as a parent, some qualifications or specifications around the assignments, because I know
Right.
for both of my daughters, they put their head down and they finished their work and it wasn't a problem, we had friends where they were feeling like they needed to spend all day on the work,
Mm-hmm. Right.
and I feel like it should almost be a syllabus type of a requirement, you know, X mo- X worksheet, do this, approximate time, thirty minutes, so, so then
Right. Right.
So then, the, the families, the parents and the kids, as they're sitting down, they can see, I got two hours of work, or two and a half hours of work, it's the equivalent of what I would have had if it was a half-day, or whatever the measure is, because then they can see that if they're spending five hours on an assignment that's supposed to be a snow day assignment,
Right.
they're feeling overwhelmed and they're stressed out, but really, they're making, maybe they're making, uh, there's a disconnect, or they're making a big deal about something, you know, but if there's a syllabus that goes home with the, you know, expect to take thirty minutes, and not every class should send home a, a, um, especially at like the high school level, you know, my daughter Eva had some classes where she felt like, you know, every expectation was like an hour and a half of work, and so her whole day was that, but
Mm-hmm.
when she talked to her teachers afterwards, they're like, oh, well, this should have only taken you twenty-five minutes, but she had a bigger sense of what it should be.
Right.
So there's, I mean, just a little bit more direction, and I've read through some of the comments, and I keep kind of, and it feels like that's kind of one of the sense where we didn't know what to, how much to actually put into it, or how much work was actually needed.
Mm-hmm. Right. And so, one of the things that we learned, um, is how to support students when they come back, um, and so that was the work that a lot of the paraprofessionals would do, um, and also the teachers around, you know, going through the assignments with students, particularly students who felt stress or anxiety around it because it had taken them so long, um, parents who had called in or tried to contact the, the teacher, um, to get exactly that, some clarification on, gee, this is taking, you know, two hours, is, is that what your expectation was, and I think, um, teachers are learning that,
Mm-hmm.
um, as they design them, if we move forward with next year, I, I think you'll see more clarity, um, and.
And there's, there's a lot of comments about change in due dates, do we have any reference about, around that, like, any examples, just, I mean.
So.
I think, I think part of that, though, I was gonna say, we, we need to do a much better job communicating this out to the, the students and the parents, because I think there was some disconnect as to when does this really do? Is it due the very next day, or five days, and that may be what you were, were just talking about, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mhm, right, right, right.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
I mean, I could talk about it all night.
I, I, honestly, overall, I don't know how I feel about Blizzard Bags in general, like, to me, it just, it, it can never make up
Mm-hmm.
for a student being in the classroom with a teacher face-to-face, and, um, you know, a lot of the comments that I read, heard several times, um, you know, it was busy work, it just felt like additional homework, um,
Right.
you know, the, the assignments didn't match up, the content that was actually being taught in the classroom, and I don't know how you solve for that, because you cannot plan
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Right.
for when a snow day comes.
Right, right.
And, I, I don't know, I, to be honest with you, I, it, it, to me, it just, it feels like another way of of chipping away at equality education in the district, so, I, I personally am not
Mm-hmm.
I think it's, you know, it could be useful if it's, if you, if you've used all five snow days, and you're on the sixth or seventh, you know, but if you're using these from the get-go, your first snow day, right out of the gate using Blizzard Bag, to me, it, I don't know, I just.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I, I understand the intent, and I, and I like, I like it, but on the flip side of it, um, man, I just love a snow day, I'm sorry. I feel like the kids are being robbed of something, and I know that's corny, and that's not my role as a school committee member, I should be thinking about the education of the kids, but I feel like there's so much pressure on them all the time, especially kids in high school, that sometimes it's nice to have a pressure valve release moment, where you just really get an unexpected day off.
Well, you just hit the nail on the head, it's, is this really education, that's where I.
Yeah, like, are we, are we doing this because we don't wanna have some snow days at the end of the year, it is, it is a cost savings, it does save us money by closing up earlier or not, but, um, I don't know, is it?
But it's not really closing up earlier, though, because if we, if we didn't have any snow days, we would have been out on June thirteenth, so, at that point, you're kind of giving a wash, and those teachers were supposed to be working, and I know, my, my girls had a lot of back and forth, and, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm pretty for it, but I have a lot of friends that weren't for it, and so I, I'm seeing both sides, and I get it, and my girls don't struggle in school, they've, I've been very lucky, but I'd have friends that their kids do struggle, and so they felt like they were being kind of out there, but in the age of internet learning and online stuff, and this is sort of a good gateway for them too, and how to learn from not being right in a class, and then have that be discussion that comes in, but we have to for- learn to figure out how to be able to make that go.
Yeah, I thought that was.
You know, because I think there's, we're having this disconnect, there's this lesson, like we, Deanne just said, you can't plan when there's a snow day, so there's been something that has come up, but then it becomes like extra work because it's not in line with what's actually happening.
Yeah, I, I guess what, what keeps coming into my. Yeah, I, I guess what, what keeps coming into my mind is, is this really edu- educating a child?
Well, I, I think I would say yes, because, um, to Jen's point, one of the goals was to help students begin two things. One, the online, so our students, certainly our students in three through, um, twelve. To have an asynchronous environment that they're having to learn in is something that they're going to encounter in college. It's gonna be asynchronous, they're going to post, they're gonna have to wait for feedback. They're not gonna get, you know, direct instruction right in front of them. They may get an assignment, a project and off they go. Um, and then the second piece is to be independent, um, is to take some learning, um, and, and, and develop some sense of independence. Resiliency, uh, maybe talking with your, um, with your peers as opposed to directly engaging with the teacher. Um, which is something that we're trying to, um, develop in kids as well.
I was gonna say, I thought that was part of.
And I, you know, to your point, Dan, yes, there's a lot of growth we can do in terms of how we're using Google Classroom. Um, whether we're using, and David's talked a lot about this with us, whether we're actually videotaping, um, lessons. So students are watching their teacher, um, and then, um, doing some follow-up exercises. So, there's a lot of growth for us, whether teachers establish a certain time that they want, um, students to be, um, engaging with them. Um, there's a lot of growth in learning for us to do, um, but it is education. I would say it's education.
Because that's, that's what, that's what's hap- that's how it's happening now, right? So, we're not doing it that way. So, if we wanna compare apples to apples, then that's the conversation we need to have. Because in college, I mean, I did it in, in, in graduate school, you know, your professor was online. You were in, you know, you were having back and forth conversations with your fellow students, with your professor. You might be, uh, watching a video at the same time and commenting. That's not happening here.
Right, but it, and to your point, now colleges, it's asynchronous. It's not immediate. You're not all on at the same time.
Yeah, like in a blackboard environment, you have to go on and you, you know, there's a video that's posted.
And I think there's. Right.
So you may be watching it at the same time as someone else, but that's what I did when I was at AIC for six years. I was posting, um, you know, that it was like a class in a box. We put the syllabus up there, we put all the documents, supporting documentation, all of the books, you know, e-articles, everything, videos.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'd have to, the students in the class, and I get that that's talking college level, but, you know, would have to read the articles. Read submissions from other people and comment. So it was a virtual, true virtual classroom. It wasn't all at the same time.
Right, I understand that. And is that, is that the way this is working now?
And I think that's our learning. I think some teachers are doing that. I think some teachers are not doing that. And I think that's what we need to, you know, if we move forward, that's what we need to shore up. Um, because it was a learning experience. How are we creating lessons? How are we creating assignments? Are they meaningful? Do they represent the learning that could, should be going on in a classroom?
Well, how did the teachers feel about it?
I think those are. Well, they were in favor of it. Um, I think there's a, there's a teacher, uh.
Eighty-nine something percent.
Right. And, and they worked through quite, you know, when, when they received concerns from parents, they worked very hard, I think, to address those and to adjust. Um, you know, to your point, they wanted it to be rigorous, but in some cases they went a little above in the rigor and, uh, stressed kids out. Um, and so they, they were learning, uh, where that sort of sweet spot is, uh, for students.
Well, also, that's why it was a pilot program.
Right.
To work out all of these things that you're discussing.
Yeah.
The good, the bad, the ugly, you know, make it better.
Mm-hmm. Right.
See, so let me jump in. Um, when we said pilot, my understanding was that we were going to establish some metrics. Uh, at least some baseline standards, compare against that. And then this conversation will be based on those measurements and, uh, you know, what we'll learn, what, you know, what went this way, what went that way. We're relying on surveys and I'm relying partially on my own experience as well. But if I strip those out, as I look at what we're trying to do, it seems to me that we're not really ready to call this a school day at home. That's one. Number two, I'm not sure that, um, all the kids got the same experience out of this. Some got extremely stressed out, uh, and I, I had one at home, who just actually, who had more work on a snow day than she would've had if she were here at school.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which didn't make any sense at all. The difference between homework and school day was not clear. It's, it's basically homework that you're taking home and in my mind, it wasn't making up for a normal school day. The other side is, it looks like it was actually, uh, a burden for some families as well. I understand that many folks, primarily based on the fact that they were going to, uh, be going into their summer vacation at an earlier date. They liked it, that's good, but, I mean, I, I read one family, you know, uh, rely on the information that we have. They went and bought a printer only to accommodate the fact that things had to be printed out. And I don't think that's, you know, that's what we wanted to do. If I take all that and put it to the side and now go back to my personal view on this. There are a few things. One is, learning has to be well-planned, just like, it's not just school learning, but learning everywhere. We benefit from it when it is well-planned. I don't know that we have standards. In fact, in my line of business, we say, if we have multiple standards, that means we have no standards. Everybody's doing it in a different way and it's not really, uh, the best way to initiate a program like this. The, uh, second thing is, I really think there is something to be said about a snow day when the kids can go out and roll in the snow and not have to worry about homework and, uh, all that. Number three, it seems like there was, um, there was an inconsistency in the way teachers were available. Uh, when, you know, some students had questions and all that, that came clearly through the survey as well. Um, and the last thing is, something that was mentioned in the survey also came up here tonight as well. Can this be something that keeps us from going into the sixth day? As opposed to us immediately making up for the snow days, which we already approved in our calendar? I mean, then it doesn't make any sense. If we're gonna be going into this, we approve calendars with snow day built into it at the end of the, uh, year for five days. Um, you know, is this something that we can use to prevent going further into the summer? Maybe there's something, uh, that we can discuss around that. But as, as it is, I'm not, I don't feel like we are well-structured to have this in place. To substitute, first of all, to be a substitute for a, a good school day. Um, and number two, I'm not sure that we have some of the things that you are mentioning, which would be great to have. If, you know, we had the videos and this and that, the kids knew what they were gonna do. Instead, seems like we are expecting a lot of printouts and things have to be, uh, really done the old way and brought back to school. So, for that reason, I'm really not, uh, at least the way it is structured right now, I'm not in favor of continuing Blizzard bag.
Well, that goes back to what Jen said about having a syllabus, that this particular assignment should take you twenty minutes. So you probably need those kind of guidelines.
Yep.
I think we have.
To go along with the Blizzard bag.
Yeah.
I think what we're gonna stumble across at this point though, is we are starting school very late this year. For the first time in several years, we're starting back after Labor Day. It's been, since Eva's been in school, it's not, she's never been, so, so anyway, we're, and I'm probably wrong in that, but regardless. We're doing that, so a lot of people are already assuming that Blizzard bags are in place because we're starting later and the school day is later. So that we get out of school June twenty-first, I think, is, is the last day of school next year? And so, now, we, so now the five days after that is now, now you're at the end.
I could've fired you, Kelly.
It's, it's earlier.
No, the fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth still.
And then it was, then this, the fourteenth unless we can then add snow days.
Is it the fourteenth? I thought, how can we be on the same date if we started on the week after Labor Day?
They. They move professional development day, yes.
We can pick up the day on Good Friday, that Paul's doing a vacation, and we pick up another day.
Okay, I apologize.
I, I guess where my confusion is, is, you know, what was the intent? Or what is the intent of Blizzard bags? You know, what, what are the goals that we're trying to accomplish? That's what I'm really fuzzy about. To me, it doesn't feel clear.
No, I agree with you. I.
And, and if I don't understand where we're trying to get to, then, I don't know, I, I.
Well, I think that goes back to what I was saying, we need a, a better talking point, say, this year. Blu- Blizzard bags are in place, the expectation is, it's this amount of work.
Right.
It's due on this day after or the day after, five days later, however, however it's set up.
Everyone has the same date.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying even, even higher level than that. You know, what, what's the goal of the Blizzard bag? Is it to get out of school earlier? Um, because to Emery's point, to me, it is not, no matter how much work a, a student does. It does not replace a day at school. And, and I think we're, I don't, again, this is just my own opinion. It feels like we're going into a danger zone if we're slowly chipping away at days of being, you know, in the classroom. With, with teachers, in, you know, brick and mortar.
So if kid.
So, so I'm just getting back to that point of, what's the goal? You know, what are the goals here? Because if you were, if we were clear on the goals, maybe I would have a different opinion about it.
I mean, I, 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 I have the same question and I was asking the question, uh, to myself as well. What were we trying to achieve other than really, uh, not going to, five days into, five more days into June? But I also think, Dan, that it could potentially be a substitute if we had some of the things that we're talking about.
The systems. Exactly.
So, can I ask a question? Because one of the things that I think is, we have a lot of half-days, that it's not a full day in school. So there's kids that are missing on part of their day, or if we have an early dismissal, or we have a late day. I mean, to me, it kind of feels the same, like when my, when we have an early dismissal day, or we have a, a, a s- delay, a snow delay. Or there's a half-day at school, that's a day that my girls are not getting a full day of education. So to me, it doesn't feel any different if they're having a snow, a snow-day Blizzard bag that takes them a couple of hours at home. It's the same amount of work that they would have. In my, in my eyes, it should be like the equivalent of a half-day. You know, a couple hours of schoolwork, that counts as a full day. And that's sort of how my assumption has been about how it should be working. So, if we're concerned about a day and, and a full school day or not, then we should be looking at the number of half-days that we have and how we look at. To me, it, you know, I just feel like it's, it's all sort of the same.
And I, I think you're right, and, and, and you're making my point, which is slowly we're chipping away at, at, you know, FaceTime in the classroom. So, you know, where do we start to draw the line of, you know, to your point, Emery, if, if we had the systems in place, right? We had the software and the hardware in place where we can do all of these wonderful things that colleges and universities are doing. I'd be having a different conversation here, but we're, we're nowhere near that and nor are we in a position to be doing that in the near future.
What are the, what are, there is other districts around that are doing Blizzard bags, right? What, what do their programs look like?
Um, I think, um, Mahar Regional is probably the furthest along. They piloted, um, three years ago. Um, so their first-year pilot was much like our pilot. Um, it was a little bit of learning, a learning curve for everyone involved. And now they have more standardized, um, their assignments and their expectations. And those are some of the things that they've learned, um, as they've gone through, um, the last two years.
And I do know that some counseling is talking Blizzard bags. They're working on some policies.
Yeah, there are some districts now that they see others doing it. It's just that it's, at times, we unfortunately do that. We basically see something and just we jump on, you know, on the bandwagon.
Yes. Thank you.
And it's to see the, you know, if it fails, if it's successful, and what you have to work out.
Yeah.
And that's just talking to, um, presidents from other, you know, uh, unions from other cities.
So. If I look at the, the, I know this was a pilot, that was tough, but if you look at the comments, it looks like parents liked it mostly, those who commented. The teachers overwhelmingly liked it and the kids mostly didn't like it. Am I?
The kids, I think the, um, those were the students at the high school, I believe, were the only students that we surveyed.
Yeah. That. Okay.
Right.
I s- I still.
I mean, of course, I mean, it's home, it's homework, so kids are gonna throw it away, but.
Right. When you start any project or, or undertake anything, aren't, isn't the first question, what are we trying to achieve?
So if you remember, we were trying to achieve that we had students who had come back from college and communicated that, uh, two things. They had very little experience in an asynchronous online learning environment. Um, and they also had very.
And what do you, what do we mean by asynchronous environment?
So, um, they have, a virtual classroom environment. They had very little experience with that.
Virtual classroom.
Um, and then second, um, they were asked to, um, be more independent. Um, and to not have everything sort of laid out, uh, for them. Uh, so those were the two things I think that we were trying to accomplish through Blizzard bags, was to allow students to learn some independence. To be learning outside of the classroom, because that's the expectation, whether you're in college or whether you're going into a career. A lot of professional development will be online. A lot of it will be, open up your laptop, sign into this website, read all of this information. Maybe take a short quiz and, you know, earn a certification online. Um, that's the world that the students are going to be entering. Um, and we heard from students, um, back from college in particular, that they were not prepared, they'd had very little experience with that. So that was really one of the primary things that, uh, we were hoping to accomplish. Um, did we do it well? Maybe not, um, because not every single teacher is using Google Classroom. Um, but the students that participate in Google Classroom, I think will tell you that it was very successful for them because it really was no interruption to what they were doing, um, because they were familiar with Google Classroom. So one of the things that we are planning, regardless of whether Blizzard bags continues or not, is during professional development, is to establish Google Classroom as our platform, online learning. So that the expectation will be that there are lessons that are occurring through Google Classroom and, and teachers will be developing those and students will be participating in them. So that's a goal of ours for, um, professional development moving forward.
But we don't have that in place currently?
We have, yeah, David's designing the professional development right now.
So, so maybe that's, that's a great place to start.
Okay.
Rather than Blizzard bags, it needs to be creating more consistency and cohesiveness around a virtual classroom
I think.
or online learning.
Right.
And then, step two or step three becomes.
I think what we're missing is there was a lot of excitement during this whole process, both with families and with teachers, around creating this new way of learning. And, you know, did we have all of the right standards? Did we have all of the right measures? No, we didn't. But there was an incredible amount of excitement, which got a lot of teachers, I think, more engaged in developing Google Classroom and developing their expertise, um, going to their colleagues, asking, hey, how do I do this? Um, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't, um, if we didn't cite that as one of the benefits of, of the learning that occurred for staff.
And I, I, I like, I like hearing that and I would hope that we have that type of excitement, uh, to try new things.
Mm-hmm.
And we were not at all opposed to trying new things, even with the pilot. I think the challenge is that it seems like there was a problem and we had the wrong solution to that problem. If the problem was that, uh, students who are going to college or moving on to environments where there is a lot more virtual learning, were finding themselves in uncharted, uh, waters because they never had a similar experience. Let's just find a way to provide that experience without losing the excitement that the teachers have and everybody has. And, you know, let's put together something around that. It may be applicable, I think Dan was saying this as well, that it may be applicable eventually to Blizzard bag as well. But it doesn't seem to me that in the way, where we are right now, in our current state, we really have a structure that addresses the need for that education at home. Uh, so there is really nothing that students can dial into. Uh, if most of the things that they had to do was an email and then sit down and just do it, and in fact, print hard copies of it. That doesn't really, in my mind, align with, you know, virtual learning or, you know, the benefits of watching some video and doing independent studies. I think we have some, some, uh, work to do to get the students to that. How do we garner the energy that is apparently there? And, and then, you know, uh, use it to create the opportunity for the students to learn in a more independent setting, using virtual learning and all that? Cause I'm not sure that we, I mean, if I'm off, correct me, feel free. It seems like we don't necessarily have that virtual learning environment that we're providing the kids right now in the context of these Blizzard bags. Would that be a correct statement?
Well, I think one of the anticipations was with the new school, with. Well, I think one of the anticipations was with the new school, with students being um in a one and one-to-one environment, that it would actually, this year would have helped establish the Google Classroom. Um, we did have the pilot of um Google Chromebooks for grades um four through six. And so the idea was is that as students become, particularly in four through six, um, or three through six, in a one-to-one environment, that then they would just naturally transition into learning during a snow day. Um, it really would not be any different than some of the work that they were doing in the classroom.
So let me, let me ask a question before.
So yes, was the cart before the horse in that? Yes, but we knew that, um, we knew what was coming in terms of technology.
Okay.
I mean, we have to remember, we don't even, we we did not have the hardware at the time, now we do. And so for September, every student in three through six will walk into East Meadow and take their Chromebook from their homeroom and travel through the building with it, um, and that's the intent. Um, and so, uh, we did a lot of learning this year as professional educators around how to best use those devices and how to best design lessons, um, things like interactive notebooks, um, you know, things like Google Classroom and online journals are all starting to become part and parcel of what teachers are doing in classrooms. That didn't exist absolutely two years ago, um, because we didn't have the hardware to do it. You're right, we didn't have the system to do it, but how do you start to build that energy? You know, we jumped in and.
It seems as though um more of the criticism was coming at the high school level.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, part of the goal was to improve the high school level, so high school students were more ready for college.
Right. I think we, I think we do need to be careful about the high school, I mean, I think a lot of the feedback was from seniors who don't have to, you know, in the past didn't have to make up time. And when you think about the amount of time that seniors lose.
There were six, six responses from seniors.
Right.
Out of, out of the thirty-six high school responses, six were seniors.
So. Right, and so, but add juniors, because they're looking at next year, right.
Eleven then total, five juniors.
So those are all kids that are looking at it and saying, you know, in previous years, seniors didn't have to make up any snow time, you know, a- all of those days, they were excited that they didn't have to make up. Um, and I think it is a culture shift to say, you know, to your point, Dan, that those instructional minutes are valuable. And I don't want to lose a sixth of a senior's year, because we end up with, you know, five snow days, and they're graduating two weeks before everybody else, and, you know, that tha- that's valuable time. That I want to be able to have instruction or assignments uh for kids, especially seniors, and that's a culture shift, I get that.
So Cheryl, I, y- you know I'm a numbers guy. Um, I agree with you that we should read the survey, you know, correctly. Out of the six seniors that responded, three of them said, yes, definitely continue Blizzard bags.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and one of them said, yes, but with revisions, so four out of six.
Right.
So I don't want to really put the onus on the seniors, even though what you said, exactly what they said.
Yep. Yep.
And, you know, from my own senior's experience, she said, I'll, I'll suck it up and I'll, you know, I'll go with it
Right.
if this is something that's gonna work for the district, but it's not helping me at all. I don't think, I don't know that they were uh trying to influence, and in fact, the numbers show that they were not, uh, or they were able to influence really the outcome of the survey as we've seen it, and these are parents. Uh, what we, what we received from the students, uh, I think those were aligning pretty nicely. And we received those before, actually, we saw the survey, I think. Those were aligning with what the parents were saying in a way. Even some of the parents who said, yes, I would like to see it continue, yes, we would like to see it continue with summer visions. They were giving us some things that were not working. So I don't know that we, at least from my perspective, I don't know that I'm saying this is something that we will never do or consider. What I'm trying to understand, what is the best way for us to really consider something like this? Whether we call it Blizzard bag, or, you know, go learn on yours, on your own uh thing, whatever it might be, how do we really get to a point where we structure it in such a way that first we have the plan for it, we know what we're gonna be offering within it, and then we then are able to measure what the kids did. Cause the only measurement was whether or not the kids completed the homework, and that's homework, it's not really anything that's that added any enrichment in my mind.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't the kids at the high school graded on that, on those? Some of them were um equivalent to a test?
Yes.
And others were, you know, homework, I'm.
Yes, which actually, that's a great point, Robin. When we said a pilot, we, I did not at least have the impression that they were going to be now be substitutes for tests or quizzes and this and that. So it just wa- went beyond what I had considered to be a pilot.
But with with the same, so seventy-two and a half percent of the hundred and eleven people said yes to definitely continue with the Blizzard bags.
So so what can, what what can we do?
Okay.
So, I'm feeling like we're saying we don't want to, but s- it seems like, you know, a hundred and eleven isn't a crazy n- high number of responses, I don't know what I was expecting, but.
I I I'm not saying I don't want to, I'm saying in its current form, I I don't see it as a day of replacing schools. So how do you call it a school day? That's that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Can I bring up something that you are not even considering at the elementary level?
Sure.
That these kids are taking home assignments. Parents are spending time with their child, helping them get it done, supervising, even if they're just sitting at the table while the kid does the work, they're spending some time. You have no idea what that means to a child, especially at the lower levels. And I know a few parents who knew a snow day was coming, especially if superintendent called it early. Blizzard bags done, tomorrow we play in the snow. I mean, it was, some of them, it was an incentive to get it done, so we can play with mom or dad tomorrow, spend some time as a family. You know, the Blizzard bags, yes, it was work, but on one side, it's education, on the other side, it's. I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah.
That's fine, but you know, there are a hundred and seventy-five other days that I hope the families are spending some time with their children too. And I don't want to be, sound mean.
Yeah, I know.
And I really love the fact that it was an opportunity for some families to spend some time together. But again, that would be another problem that I would like to find a way to address, to entice, uh, cause I I also saw that some families said, hey, we're working, and we did not know, we don't have family around, we did not know where to leave the kids, so they took time off to stay and then help the kids with their homework.
Well, I mean, regardless, they're gonna have to find daycare if it's a Bli- if it's a snow day. So, you know, whether or not they had to stay home to help, or, you know, that certainly is something.
Stay home to watch their kid, maybe.
Yeah.
Is there, is there stuff that we can, or are there ways that we can measure some of these changes that we feel need to be made so that if we were to, like, I'm from operations, and to walk away from something like this after trying it once without having the opportunity to make good on the things that you know went wrong, doesn't really sit well with me. But to everybody else's point, we need to be able to figure out, did we hit the mark next year much more effectively than we are right now, I guess is my point.
And another thing to possibly consider is instead of sticking those five assignments in there right away,
Mm-hmm.
is to do one assignment, that way they're more prevalent to what is happening in the classroom. It is because when these Blizzard bags were created, at least I can speak for the elementary level, it was five assignments right in the um folder right now.
And that, and that was the point I was making when my first question was, and those were in the folder, I think, in November when
That's right.
Right.
when they first came home, and then how do you make, you know, measure that far out to February when you're actually taking the snow days?
Yeah, so how 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 can it possibly match up to the content you're learning? Uh, you know, if you get a, if you, if you get a snow day in January and 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 these five assignments were in there in November.
There's, there's almost no way to do that.
I mean, there's no way. I I also think we have to be careful about what happens in a classroom every day, there are certainly days that are review. There are certainly days where, you know, we're coming up on an MCAS, or we're coming up on a, on a test, and we review. There are certainly days where teachers take time and review things from September or October, just to make sure that kids are on board. And quite frankly, there's times when teachers take a break, and they create an assignment that could be something that's a team builder, or um could be um a self-esteem assignment, you know, could be something around um wellness, or, you know, it isn't like, you know, every minute of every day is direct instruction. And I, and I think that allowing teachers some flexibility and creativity in that, and some ownership, I think broadens the experience for kids and could be helpful, and maybe we don't have a criteria for that, and maybe that's something that we could create that would help teachers and help us communicate to parents what the intent of the lessons are, um, you know.
Cheryl, I think, I think that's, you just said, what is critical, I mean, I I'm in operations as well, but
A framework, yeah, we need some consistent framework, yeah.
Just because we did it and it didn't work, ju- you know, I I I I'm not, I don't believe in keeping something that we don't know how is is gonna work. So if we're gonna have some rules around it, we're gonna have some standards around it, we're gonna know how to measure it, then we can have the conversation. But e- e- even in this conversation, we are all having good solutions to it. Is it written somewhere? Is it, you know, is it really communicated? Is it something that we're gonna be saying throughout the year? If that's the case, then it's gonna be a second year where we're gonna be going through the same motions and we're not gonna really establish.
But I think one of the first things you said was, what did we learn, Mike? This, this is exactly what we learned. I mean, there's a thousand things that we learned.
And that's, that's awesome, but what are we gonna do about it? Are we now creating a standard that?
Our, if that's, in my opinion, yeah, that's what we would be doing, we would be bringing teachers together at grade level, we would be bringing teachers together at um team and at department to review Blizzard bags, to create criteria, to make sure we're standards aligned. Yeah, all of those things.
So one of the things I would like, that we're all starting to say is, I think we need to take a few minutes and jot down the ideas that we're coming up with, whether, so, I'm gonna pat myself on the back, I like my syllabus idea where every billi- you know, every, goes down, for every assignment, every Blizzard bag, there should be some kind of an outline. That, you know, you have five classes or five core classes or whatever that you're in, each of these should be totaled up to whatever. You know, this worksheet should take you approximately this much, you know, this research project or whatever, so that there's a framework around it. I think we need to have it clear that it's not not going to be any more than a quiz grade, because it shouldn't be that one, you know, one class is a tet, it's the equivalent of a test, and the other class, it's the equivalent of a homework. It should be the same weighted grade, K through, P K through twelve. It should be, you know, whatever the Blizzard bag is, so that there's some kind of framework around the instruction, it should be, you know, weighted the same across. It should be, there should be no deviation from the deadline, if it's five days, then it's five days, the teachers all agree to that. You know, and we've had some other things, whether it's, you know, if there's interaction in Google Classroom, that's fine, but we're a public school and that every kid is going to have access to internet, they're gonna go to grandma's house, they're gonna go to their mom or dad for work on a snow day, so we have that five days, but they might have to have time carved out in their day following when they come back to be able to do something online. And we could have, you know, there are storms where we lose power and the internet's down, so then what do we do? You know, we need to, we need to start bulletizing what it is that we want, so we can have a framework, so that we can start to see whether or not we want to go through.
I think, I think that's, I think that's exactly what I would say too with Emery, it's like, so we know where we had issues this year.
So we can measure it, right?
Yeah, and then for next year, wh- wh- what's our plan to get better on those issues? And then at that point, then we can sit down and figure out, do we want to proceed with another step forward? But I don't like s- stopping something without at least, you know, taking a look at, do we have a way to fix the things that we know went wrong?
Mm-hmm.
If it turns out we don't, or we're not ready for it yet, then we have a discussion of when maybe we postpone it or whatever.
Uh, yeah, so this one, I'm trying to understand, Mike, are we gonna fix it during the school year, are we gonna fix it before we start the school year?
We have time, it's gonna snow until uh November.
Yeah.
But I. I I I'm not comfortable with that. Uh, you know, we have time, unless there's a timeline, we're gonna have something to to discuss by the state, and that's not gonna be, you know, uh, cause it gets, it gets snow in November.
Yeah.
October.
I probably was gonna say, we need to have a vote on this sometime in September, not the first m- meeting in October to determine if we're gonna at least proceed in next year, right?
October. Yeah. You know, one thing that really, as I was going, that I I completely agree, that we 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 cannot really go too far out, one. Number two, just the the, as I'm reading this, and not only on one, but on many of them, I read about the stress that it was causing to some of these kids. And what I'm thinking is, we talked about mindfulness and, you know, stress levels, this and that, and now we have something that's, at least some folks are telling us, is adding to their stress level. Again, not saying that this is not something that can work, but we can't really just, you know, do something on 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 one hand that is trying to help the same matter, and then on the other side, potentially adding to the uh stress and burden of some of these kids and the families. We have to really make sure that this is working in the way it is intended.
But at the same time.
But I think if you use Jen's syllabus like she's describing, so a kid's not spending three hours on something that should have been a twenty-minute assignment, and you have those guidelines, that will eliminate a lot of the stress.
Yeah, I think.
I don't, I honestly, that that, I hear you, but it won't, you know why? Because that puts the entire onus on the kid. We're gonna say, hey, you know, you're supposed to be spending thirty minutes on this, some kids will spend forty-five, now just the kid is saying, you know.
Well, none of your kids will spend ten.
Some kids may spend ten, that's fine, but some kids will spend forty-five, so how do we really gauge this on both ends? So that it doesn't become another, another upper, well, another uh um venue for avenue for uh punishment for the kids who cannot finish it, because some of them are saying, and I know one of the examples, it was so close to the uh uh close of the grades, they had to finish it before, you know, they had enough time just to finish it.
Yeah, but those are, those are the kids who need that extra credit. And that's why a lot of them, I I would, you know, guess, that's why some of them are panicking. If I don't do this, I'm already behind, this will help break me up.
Whatever, whatever the reason might be, we have to have a structure around this, so that we don't have interpretations, we don't have quizzes for homework that is for a snow day, and the, it 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 basically branches out to a lot of things.
But it's, but I think in the. In the grand scheme, we have the same conversation about grading policy, you know, um, teachers not having um the same grading policy in grade seven through twelve, not having a consistent grade policy. So those are all things we're working on addressing as a district and as a system. Um, I know that uh Mr. Sullivan has addressed it and has asked for feedback from the department, so now at least the departments have a um, a grading policy that is uh implemented in all of the departmental classrooms. Um, this, that issue doesn't just apply to um online learning or Blizzard bags, and stress doesn't apply simply to Blizzard bags, it's applying in the classroom as well. Um, I don't think we've created stress, um, I do think that when kids and families shared with the teacher the concern, my understanding is that many of them, um, many teachers address those concerns, especially around stress and anxiety, um, you know, uh, to differentiate the online learning or Blizzard bags from what's happening in the classroom, similar issues are happening in both.
So all the more reason for, I think what we're all, we're all saying pretty much the same thing.
I think we're more or less saying the same thing, but we're looking at it from a nuanced perspective, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
With different lenses, but I think ultimately what we need are some standards, and we need consistency, and we need a framework,
Yep.
because what I envision is you coming with something that I can actually read.
Mm-hmm.
And and, you know, then I'm thinking and saying, okay, well, what about this, and have you thought of this? And then we're having a more robust discussion, because right now, it's, it feels like, I, it's so elusive, you know? This this Bli- Blizzard bag.
Yeah, I feel like I'm.
Learning is so, um.
Well, and I, you know, t- to be honest, you're getting into the space of teachers, this is teachers' work, this is what they do. This is the the learning that they create in their classrooms, whether it's gonna be for a Blizzard bag, or whether it's gonna be during the day, it is elusive. What teachers do and how they communicate to their students, what their expectations are, how they manage anxiety, stress in their classroom, whether it's in a Blizzard bag assignment or or a classroom assignment, I mean, we are treading into the work of teachers. And I understand your desire to want to have a framework and expectation, but I think, you know, I would appreciate some time to be able to work with the teachers to develop that. Um, so if that's what you're asking for, then absolutely, you know, let me, let me get a core group of teachers together to talk about how Blizzard bags went, what the expect, what the experience was as staff, and at, for their students and for learning in their classroom, and then create those next sort of standards and expectations, so that we are communicating clearly. If it is Google Classroom, what are the expectations for Google Classroom? If it is worksheets, what what does that look like? If teachers are going to be innovative and start filming themselves, what does that look like? I would never want to handcuff a teacher and say, oh, we don't have a standard for videoing, so you can't do that yet. You know, I mean, part of this was to be innovative, um, and to push on the envelope of traditional stand and deliver instruction. And I think we accomplished that in a lot of places, I don't think we did it everywhere, but this was a way to push that envelope.
Then, uh, yeah, yeah, first of all, I will disagree, that we're not. Then, uh, first of all, I will disagree, that we're not really, this is not at all us telling the teachers how to do their work. Uh, the idea here is something that we, as a school committee approved, is not really showing us what we thought it was going to accomplish. Then we're basically trying to understand. So, I'm not gonna go to any teacher to tell them what to assign, what to do. But if the program that we're trying to create is part of the curriculum, I think curriculum falls on the, uh, school committee. So, I think we have, we should have these conversations, that's only healthy. But on the other side, we're, we're, we're all saying the same thing. We're talking about a standard, what I would like to understand, when that standard is gonna be ready? Because in the absence of that, I'm inclined to say no to continuation of blizzard bag. If, as you're saying, there is time needed to put that standard together, so we will know what the expectations are. I, you know, would you be, would, would anyone be actually okay if, a, a video, just because it's a moving picture, is gonna be the same uh, in, in the way it is addressing some of the needs? I mean, I'm sure Steven or Bill will have some conversations around those two, right? They will have those conversations around some standards that they have. I am trying to understand what those standards will be, so we can decide whether or not we wanna continue a piece of a curriculum. Right, this is, I mean, isn't this piece of, part of the curriculum, the, you know, way it is happening? We're taking five.
I would say it's instruction, it's how, it's how we're teaching kids, so.
So, let me just, let me just go the other way. The hundred and seventy-five days that we're reducing the year to in our school buildings.
But we're not, and that's where I think we, we're not reducing.
We, we have to, we have to make sure that the five days are really inclusive of those creative elements that you're talking about. I'm then all for it.
Mm-hmm.
We talked about virtual, I mean, we're having these conversations as if this is not the same committee that talked about, uh, virtual high school, expanding the offerings through virtual high school.
Yep.
I, I will not, I will not really take it, uh, if it's gonna, you know, make it look, uh, make us look like we're opposing technology and we're opposing, uh, uh, innovative, uh, ideas from our, not at all, I wouldn't encourage that. What I'm trying to understand, in light of some survey that we're looking at, that, how do we close those gaps? How do we create some standard or framework, as you called it, so that, you know, we all are consistent in the way we do certain things, expect certain things from the students, expect certain things from the teachers? Do we have, for instance, any, any rule that says, if a teacher is not available for questions during the day, during the snow day? What is the, what is the, uh, uh, repercussion of that?
The teachers are supposed, the way it was sent home, the paperwork that was sent home, is the teachers were available during the school day.
The, not the survey, the survey is not saying that, some teachers were not. And I'm not just pointing finger, and I hate doing, saying it the way I'm saying it, but that tells me that at least there was some element of miscommunication that kept some of those interactions from happening as expected, on one side or both sides. All I'm trying to understand is, will we be in a position to do what Mike is saying? Look at what we learned, create that framework, and then we can, in September, say, you know what, this is, this is the way we are discussing and voting for it. This is what we want to see. But, I mean, it's not yay or nay today.
Right.
But how do we really, yeah.
I understand that, yeah. I think, you know, be, I think it's a lot to have it ready in September. I don't think that if we waited until even November to make a decision and allow the teachers the time when they came back in September and October, to have those discussions and those meetings and create what it is that, you know, you are looking for in terms of expectation and unified approaches. Um, and then, I, I, I don't think November's too late, um, you know, I think people know we're talking about it, teachers know we're talking about it, so.
Right, so would.
And we can implement blizzard bags any, anytime we want. I mean, if there happened to be a snow day in October, we go with the status quo.
Sure, so, Mike.
Right. Right, yeah, right, yeah.
You know, because I'm not, I'm certainly not comfortable, uh, you know, doing another year of it in it, in its current form. But I, I'm all for giving you the time that you need and teachers and meetings and everything else and bringing it back to us in November, if that's what you need.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um.
And, and, and I'm, I'm all good with that as well.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, again, the intent was never, and you and I had these conversations outside this as well.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It was never really to say, you know, scratch it, but in the current form, there are certain things that are not really aligning with what, uh, expectations are on many different sides, the school committee, one, you know, uh, uh, and the, uh, missing piece here, we had to rely on really the school, the student council to put together a few instead of, you know, doing something similar with the students.
Right, yeah.
So, we could get their perspective, they're a big part of this and we don't really have, uh, a, a lot of input from them.
Right. Right. Right.
And, one of the things too, I'd like to s- point out is, I think, when we're talking about, you know, was, was the teacher available and my child was stressed? Was your kid stressed because they waited till the fourth day to do their assignment, to hand it in? We don't know, cause there's no parameters over the questions and that, you get that with a survey. And was the teacher not available? Well, I emailed him at nine o'clock, PM. You know, the school day is seven to three, so again, we don't have a parameter, so, and that would be one of the things I'd like to see in this bulletized framework is, teachers are expected, this is a day of school, teachers are expected to be available from seven AM to four PM or whatever.
Right, right.
You know, if, if a teacher works until three or whatever, maybe there's a gimme because it's a, a snow day. But the, at, at that point, when it's, school day is over, that's how we treated in my house, when the school day was over, it was time to be done. Two thirty, and you still have a lot of snow day left at that point, you know, like, there's still time left in your day. So, you, you know, we, I think we need, like Ross saying, like Emery's been saying, Deanne's been saying, Mike's been saying, we're all on the same page. But I think we just need to kind of boil it down to something that's more standardized. And so then we can kind of look at it and say, this is how we go, and I, I'm in agreement, I think if we have it in October to implement in November, or ready or to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
But worst case scenario, we just take a snow day if it snows in October, right, because we don't.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what I just said, we just go with, um.
Yeah, we just say, yeah.
But it's a, it's a clarified status quo.
And there's, there may be some years where we're not ready with snowbag, you know, blizzard bag assignments, because we get hit with an October first snowstorm, you know.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I also wanna emphasize one thing that you said. I saw a lot of folks who were, uh, apparently expecting that the assignments for the snow day, and again, I, I, I think they, you know, that, that's the feeling, that this is our assignment. W- had to align with what was at that time being discussed in the classroom. I don't know that, that, unless you have something prepared for every single day, you, you will not have that.
Right.
But what you said earlier, is there something that is still enriching to the students?
Yes.
That can be offered at any time, we talked about Khan Academy when we were, uh, doing the strategic planning, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, there are things that kids can go and look at and learn, and then when they go back to the classroom, some of those concepts can be discussed
Right. Right. Mm-hmm.
To make sure that they help them and we can do some of the measurement that you're talking about. There are some ways, uh, one thing that, that slightly, uh, uh, maybe got me worked, worked up is the fact that we are saying the same thing, but we are not necessarily, uh, putting it in the box where we are, I believe, all saying, we don't currently have a standard that says, this year we'll learn these lessons, your point, and next year, we're gonna be doing this, 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 whenever we have these five snow days. We don't have that, whether you wanna call it a syllabus or you wanna call it something else, we don't have a standard around how we're going to implement a better, a well-structured s- uh, snow day, uh, assignment or snow day work, whatever we wanna call it.
One thing you just said that I'm wondering is, is, we just implemented this mindfulness thing with the classes and the videos and all of that. Is it safe to then say, because there's a curriculum requirement based around these lessons, can the blizzard bags be based on that? So, then it's all, you know, because that mindfulness is throughout the whole, whole year, right?
Yeah. Well, I think.
Fifteen lessons across the year or something, isn't it?
It doesn't include high school, right?
I think part of, I think.
Oh, right, it's only to seven, three, three.
I'd like to have some, I'd like to have some time to work with teachers, because while I, I get uniform expectation, I think we also have to be mindful, no pun intended, that we have developmental age groups, so, you know, we have kindergarten through grade two. That's gonna look different than the work that's going, and so maybe.
Oh, and I think the expectation.
In there, yeah, it's, the cohort concept is what I'm referring to when I say, I'm not saying twelve grade is gonna do the same thing as kindergarten.
Right, and so maybe it's, maybe it's a grid where we have, you know, the expectations for K through three are here, yeah.
Right, but at the same time, those, some of those kids felt like they needed to spend all day on this worksheet, because there's no way, it should only take me ten minutes or fifteen minutes.
Right, right, right.
And then some kids were struggling with it and it would take them eight hours, because they didn't know what it was, what it was wrapped around.
So, I just wanna be clear that what, what we would probably be looking at is more like a tiered, you know, a cohort group of expectations and.
Absolutely, and it should be, because their, their, their whole curriculum is, is, they're not all doing the same thing, the kindergartners aren't doing the same thing as seniors.
And again, you know, if teachers came and presented that they wanted, um, let's say, to do, um, what you're talking about, which is an extension or an enrichment activity that could, um, be managed over five days, and maybe the, the beginning of that in grade four is, um, the beginning of a research project, let's say, for, um, an animal, I'm just making it up. And, and so blizzard bag day one is, you know, researcher animal, watch these videos, go to National Geographic, do all of this work, and then come back and as a group, we're gonna talk about it. I, I would like there to be flexibility in what teachers are creating, um, so that there's lessons that they're learning about how that works in an online environment with kids. Kids that don't have access, you know, we've always, when kids came back and didn't have access, whether it was a broken computer or lack of power, or lack of access, we always sat them down, um, and went through that and gave them time during the day to use our, our equipment and our hardware and network, so that they were not behind and, you know, didn't get stressed.
I wanted to go back to something that Emery said, and he made a good point about, you know, can these blizzard bag days be enriching?
Mm-hmm, right, yeah, yep.
Cause we want students to learn, so, and, and you said something about, um, you know, teachers aren't teaching every second of, of, and I get that.
Yep, yep.
But, um, there has to be a nice combination of enrichment and what I don't wanna see is if we have six, seven, eight snow days.
Right.
You know, eight days of busy work or homework, which is a lot of these comments.
Right. Right.
You know, it was too hard, it felt like busy work, it just felt like I was doing more and more homework. That, that is not a day of school. So, there, there has to be some standard, and I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable, um, where, you know, yeah, you can be doing some worksheets at, you know, younger levels, but you can be learning a lot as well, starting research projects or whatever it might be, going to different websites, and then we're all talking about it as a group, like you said.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And so far, I, I haven't, I don't feel confident, based on all, just this information that you gave us, I don't know, there, this is all the information we have.
Right.
I am not confident or comfortable in its current form.
I think the busy work description comes in because the papers were put together so far out. I think if they're not done in that batch of five in October or November, and they're done closer to, um, the actual snowstorm. Let's face it, snowstorms don't appear overnight.
The only day we have a problem is a Monday, I would think, right, cause typically we would know.
Right.
Well, they're usually talking about it enough in advance, like, so.
And regardless, regardless of whatever the real reasons are, all we have is the feedback that we have.
Yeah.
Right.
And I am basing my judgment on the feedback that I have, and I am just not comfortable.
So, great conversation, um, I, yes.
Very lively.
Welcome.
I like it.
You guys talking about snow like.
It's ninety-one degrees outside, people.
Not what I wanna hear, but.
I'm sure this is done already, but I'll, you know, a- as the, as a guy who spends a lot of time problem solving. The objectives that you shared with us earlier, they don't necessarily apply the same way to all these different grades, as you mentioned.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, some of them, high school students want to be more supposed to independent study, don't want.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's a management factor, you know, I can't keep kindergarten in grade three coming to school when, you know,
Yeah. Right.
three through six or three through twelve, you know, to work at home.
So, we should, I would suggest, if it's not done, and again, my guess is that probably it is done that way, building-based. If we just chunk it down to those separate problems, separate components, the way we address that problem will be much more effective.
Sure.
Uh, cause I think we all said it, that, you know, kindergarten through two will not have the same objectives or the school district will not have the same, uh, objectives for those students as we would for our, our high school students or seniors or juniors, whatever it is, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, if, if there's an opportunity to break it into smaller pieces and address the problem that way, that might help as well.
Without, I was, sorry, I was gonna say, without stepping on a, like, over, saying where I'm supposed to be on, on the side of policy versus.
No, no.
Right.
Um, maybe figuring out a better way to get questions, like maybe, you know, like every time you take something online as a survey.
Right, right.
Like maybe every blizzard bag day, was this work appropriate, was it?
Right. Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Something like that to get more feedback from the, from the parents, a little more timely, to address the six hundred people that didn't apply.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's a big.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the students then would be answering it too, because they're the ones that be looking at the assignments, you know, you could get a, just do it for the older kids, your student feedback, like, as part of this blizzard bag.
Correct.
Yeah, and on the bright side, I don't know, I don't know any, many, or any, I don't know, uh, survey, uh, that received hundred and forty-four responses.
Please pay our service.
I know, yeah, right.
That's awesome.
It is awesome, yeah.
Yeah.
So, how do we now leverage that, and I, I think that's, that's a excellent point, that if folks are willing to give their feedback,
Right.
uh, we're not gonna agree on everything, we can't just, you know, all agree on one single version of this.
Mm-hmm.
But how do we hear from their experience, so that we can continuously, and I'm sure teachers will benefit from that too.
I was gonna say, the teachers would, the teachers on a lot too, is this work too hard, too easy?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
And so when, I think when you spread it out, you can actually attach the feedback by grade, by school. So, you can attach the, I can pull the West Street data, so the comments from the parents, the teachers would be able to see by at least school, not by grade level, but by at least by school.
So, we have two meetings in November, the fifth and the nineteenth.
Nineteenth. No, the fifth is fine.
And so, do we all agree that, uh, if there happens to be a snowstorm before that, then we don't do a blizzard bag?
Right, no, that's fine, okay, okay.
Do we have to vote on that?
What?
Do we have to vote on that, cause it impacts the calendar or?
It doesn't impact the calendar.
No, it doesn't, because we already have snow days built in, yeah.
Built in, okay.
Okay.
So, the nineteenth.
No, we'll, we'll do the fifth, I was teasing.
Oh, you wanna do the fifth?
I'll do the fifth, yeah, yes.
Are you sure? Right. And so, are we looking at a vote on the fifth or just another discussion or?
I would think, I would think so.
So, then it would be really helpful if we could have it.
In advance.
Yes.
Yeah.
For you, Deanne, anything, you're welcome.
Well, could, could we have it? Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna run up against it, if it's.
I could, and I, we could potentially get it earlier, we could potentially get it in October, I just, I think we need some time, I wanna work with the leadership team around creating effective professional development, time for them to, to look at the data, to look at the surveys, um, to talk about their experiences and then, you know, to make adjustments and, and set criteria and all that, I mean, that's, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, it needs to come from the teachers.
We all want the same thing, you know that, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yep, yep, yep.
We want it rigorous, but not, you know, you want it.
There's a fine line, we don't want something miserable, but it's gotta count as a, a day of instruction.
The teachers do too. Yes. Yep, rigorous, but with a snowman, right, and hot chocolate.
Yeah.
So, can I, can I just add one more thing and hopefully it doesn't push the data further, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
When you come back with this stuff, if there's a way that you can either point out how we can tell if it was successful or what part of, that survey was supposed to address.
Right, yeah, I think that's a discussion, you know, you have, you have experience at, with high school lessons, you have some experience with elementary, high school, middle school. None, um, out of the loop now, so, and now you are, but you had, you had experience, and I think, um.
Out of the loop.
Well, I'm too, I'm out of the loop now too, yeah.
Middle school.
You know, I think the teachers need some time, you know, to really talk to each other about, um, developing those and, um, you know, I think there was a lot more going on than just what you saw, um, and so, I wanna ca- I wanna be able to capture that
Mm-hmm.
and I want the teachers to be able to, you know, articulate that amongst themselves and also to us.
Okay. Is this a community rate relation thing?
I th- I think that the fact that, so he, he, here's where I think I could sum up how I feel about these. Um, the fact that ninety-eight percent of the teachers saw the potential, and I always have to come back to trusting teachers, so, and you. Uh, so, there, I, I mean, yes, put some, I, I agree with what everyone said, but ultimately, um, knowing that it's gonna take a few years to develop this program to where we want it to be, that it's supporting other ways of learning and it's getting students to learn in different ways and our teachers to, to collaborate, um, in, in, in other ways is, is, is all good, like, that's all, we're, we're on the right track, it's just.
And, and I understand where Emery's coming from with, you know, did we, Emery is constantly asking, what's the problem and did we solve it?
And then we're shocking for parents. Right.
And, you know, maybe we didn't hit the nail on the head with that, um, and that's something we can go back to the teachers and say, what is the problem that we're trying to solve and have we done that?
Right. Yeah.
What is the problem that we're trying to solve and have we done that?
I, and I, I say, I think, I think a lot of parents misunderstood or weren't clear on how how to go about tackling these things. I know I wasn't. I had no idea, my sons were talking about Blizzard Bag, I'm I'm on the school committee, I had no idea. So I had a lot of angry. A lot of ang- you know, angry parents, um, who just didn't understand, so now that we've had our 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 first sort of year of it.
I will say from, from from my perspective, having a second grade Blizzard Bag was very straightforward. Where some of the things become more complex and I might not know the answer.
So, great conversation, thank you. By the way, if there is any opportunity for us to explore these innovative things. I don't know that we ever were uh, opposed to it, uh, if there is any additional conversation that we should have around that. That's awesome as well, I mean, the virtual stuff, uh, cause that's a good problem to tackle. Uh, now the budget related things, I know that you have, you you asked for two hours early on, so. No, no, no.
Um, so if you don't mind, I think what I will do is just um, uh, speak a little bit about uh, FY eighteen and nineteen. And then let Adam do his entry plan uh, presentation, which is not two hours.
Two minutes, maybe?
Yeah, a little longer. Um, so Adam's been with us for five days? Five days, um, and so it is a very busy time of year, we're ending FY eighteen. Uh, there were a lot of moving parts at the end of the year, um, FY nineteen, uh, we're setting up for FY nineteen. Um, we do have uh, an audit ongoing right now, it should be complete by Friday. Um, and then hopefully we'll have findings from that audit uh, within uh, two weeks. Uh, so our hope is Adam can get his um, bearings, um, really work through FY eighteen, make sure that we're ending the year. Um, uh, ending the year accurately. And then uh, also begin to develop uh, with you all the budget presentations and and monthly uh, reports for FY nineteen.
Do you mind if I add one quick thing? The audit is an audit that we asked for. So we requested it for a couple of reasons, one is we have a new business manager. Um, who wasn't introduced uh, properly.
Adam Turquini? New business manager?
And uh, so we wanted to first of all, make sure that as Adam walked in. He had a clean slate with some objective uh, evaluation of our finances. And also, uh, we wanted to make sure that in light of all these years of conversations we were having around school finances and school budget. We benefited as a school committee, we benefited from the results of an audit that will hopefully tell us, you know. Yeah, how things are working, whether there, whether there are some opportunities, so it's really for all of us to be uh, better informed. About uh, the finances of the school district.
So is it a, is it a full audit where they're looking at everything or are they just looking at the?
It's a full audit, uh, that that we asked for, in fact, that was the exact question, it's still the full audit, right? That we were asked, are you, are you looking for a quick audit or a full audit, then we asked for a full audit.
Okay, so they're getting into the controls and all the other things around the books and not just the books themselves, right?
No, so just the, as far as I know, just the books, a full audit of just the books.
So when I hear full audit, I'm thinking.
Yeah, 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 no, just the books, just the books.
And what's the difference?
Well, the other one gets into like the whole pipeline of information.
And I think, you know, that's Adam's, I think Adam's gonna talk about that, so I'm gonna leave that alone. Um, and then just to remind the committee that the targeted review results, uh, report should be in. Um, I did reach out to the state um, this past week, um, they're hopeful that that will come to us. Um, by the second week of August, keeping our fingers crossed because the admin has a retreat on uh, August sixteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth, I think. Um, and we'd like to have that as part of our discussion, and just as a reminder, if if you weren't here also. Um, that targeted review measured um, the Granby Public Schools in finance and operations. So we should get a tremendous amount of feedback from that, we should get feedback from the audit, um, which should inform Adam. Um, Adam's work certainly for for this year, if not into the next two or three years.
Food service?
Food service, um, uh, go ahead and do your entry plan, let me regroup on food service.
So you're good with eighteen?
I'm good, I'm good, yes.
And I'm gonna work my way through using the system and provide um, eighteen reports to the principals, department heads. So, you know, they're all aware of how the year ended up, obviously, so we're aware of what we're kinda carrying over into the next year. Um, and then helping department heads and school, you know, admin with their nineteen budget, getting that to them. Cause I I've talked to a couple of different department heads and they haven't seen their finalized budgets yet, so I'll be helping them kind of. Helping them and myself at the same time, see what the final budget was and also for myself, kinda learning how they came up with those numbers and and, you know. Um, what their plans are for for FY nineteen. Um, so in the folder on Google Drive, or I have copies, however you'd like it, I do have an entry plan. Um, I won't spend too much time on it, but there are some things that I would like to.
I would like a hard copy, please.
And not to interrupt Adam, but I am gonna, um, it is a draft, so we're hoping that this is also a conversation, um, much like we did with me. Uh, feedback from you in terms of um, helping us understand the school committee's perspective and also the communities. Um, if there are areas that you would like to, uh, like for us to investigate and.
So so this will be um, pretty much a year long draft and and hopefully sometime next spring or this time next year, we can kinda finalize it. And hopefully we hit our marks and stuff. Um, real quick, before I get even into this, just a little background. Um, I've been in school finance now for over ten years, almost eleven, I was in Springfield Public Schools for ten years. Um, so I have a big school district view, um, under my belt. Um, and I'll be honest, um, at, let me go back, after Springfield, I moved on to Hamburgewolfram, small regional, smaller than Springfield, um, bigger than here. I was there for a short amount of time and um, decided to grow in my profession. I learned a lot in Springfield, um, and what I've learned in Springfield, I will try to implement here. Now, I know that a lot of the stuff that goes on in a big city will not work in a small community like that, but I'm going to try to implement those kinda things. Um, um, I will be as transparent as possible, obviously, from what I've heard, that's not been the case in the past. Um, communication has not been very good in the past, um, so I realized right off the bat, those are two of the biggest, um. Gaps that I'll I'll need to fill, um, which I I don't have a problem with, um, once I kind of navigate my way through. Um, Granby in the first couple of weeks. Um, so to the, to the entry plan. Um, it's, it's a three, four phase um, plan. Uh, the first phase is really just getting to know uh, the school environment and the town environment. Um, a- and reviewing any documents, um, familiarizing myself with as much of the district as I can. Um, meeting with um, administrators, school administrators, school committee, um, town members. Um, any stakeholder really, and and if you, a stakeholder in a town could be a lot of different people. Um, but but the main stakeholders in the town and the district, and the one main question that I have is, what do you want your schools to look like? Right, how how do you want your schools to perform? Um, and I, and that's a, it seems like a simple question, it seems like a a kind of a rhetorical question, but it really is, the baseline is. You know, what do you want your schools to look like? And and I can help you hopefully get to how you want education in Granby, um, to look. So the first phase is really talking to people, getting my face out there, getting my name out there and and establishing that relationship and communication. That again, I've heard has not been um, successful in the past. Um, and I think now with myself on board, full time, it's something that we can certainly, um, we can certainly build as a trust and relationship. And and some good communication between not only the school department and the town, but the school department or or our department and the school committee. Um, and the business office and school buildings, um, and I think that's something that, um, it will certainly benefit everybody. So that's really a a a synopsis, a quick overview of of phase one. Um, phase two, i- it gets down into, you know, past practices. And I've, I've already kind of been looking into that and what TMS has done over the past ten years or so, I believe. Um, a- and trying to just kind of familiarize myself with what worked and what hasn't worked. Um, and what we can improve on and that, again, will also come with meeting with different departments and stuff, and again, asking that question, you know, how do you want your schools to look tomorrow? A year from now, five years from now, um, I have three kids of my own, they're they're six, three and two, and they're all girls. So I I'm I'm, I'm on the cusp of of education, yes. So I'm I'm on the cusp of education, my my six-year-old just finished her first year of kindergarten, um, so I, so I get it now, what it, what education should be. Um, so, uh, one of the big things i- is kind of reviewing what's been done in the district in the past and what has worked and what hasn't worked. And why hasn't it worked or why hasn't worked, um, and how we can enhance the things that work. Um, and kind of maybe eliminate some of the things that haven't worked or try something different, um, to get different results. Um, so that's a, that's a big part of phase two, i- is kinda digging into to what makes the district work. Um, and getting feedback from everybody, department heads, school building principals, um, town, school committee. Um, it's just really, really finding out, um, how we can make this this place better, how we can make education in Granby, um, better. Um, there's some date timelines on there, it's really, it's, this whole thing, this whole entry plan is gonna take a year, probably even longer. Um, for me, it's some guidance to kinda have some benchmarks on on where I should be at certain points. Um, so please don't hold me to those dates that are there, um, i- it's ongoing. Um, a- and three kinda ties back into two, but it's me working with the staff in the business office and kind of. Um, utilizing everybody to their strengths, kinda finding out what they've done, what their workload is, what the responsibilities are, what they're good at, what they're not good at. And then how I can, um, use them to their best strengths that will make myself more efficient. Them more efficient and the operations of the business office, uh, more efficient. Um, so that's, that's, that's a big, um, I'm a little bit of a control freak, so it's gonna be kinda tough for me to, um, I don't wanna say delegate. But kind of, um, let people do their, do things their way, um, but I, that might take me some time. Oh, yeah, and I'm I'm awful, but.
Opportunity of growth, I'm gonna put that in your evaluation.
Yes, uh, i- it's, it's gonna, might take me some time, but I I will, I will get there. Um, a- and again, really, really utilizing them, um, Nancy's been here for a while, Mary's been here for a while. And really, um, utilizing them to their strengths to help me grow in this position as, you know, as we we go. Um, and again, four, I guess, could be number one, um, it could be all of these, it's improved the day-to-day communications. That was one of the things when I interviewed, I heard, the first day I started, when I met with TMS, I heard is that the communication between school department and town. Is non-existent, um, so I think one of my biggest tasks, um, in these first couple of months. Is establishing a relationship, a trusting relationship, um, and, you know, kinda let them know, we're on the same team, right? We should be kinda helping each other out instead of kinda going at each other. Um, a- and that's, that's the biggest part in these first couple of months is establishing that communication. Um, and that, that relationship, TMS was only here a couple of days a week, so it's kinda hard to establish an open line of communication when you're not sure when they're here. Or, you know, I, and I understand TMS too, they're only here for a couple of days, so they have so much catch-up work, they don't have time for for phone calls or emails, so so I get it. So having someone here full-time, I think will will kinda relieve some of that tension, I hope. Um, but I, you know, I'm gonna take it upon myself to to build that relationship and and let the town know that, hey, you know, we're, we're part of you. You know, we're we're not working against you, you shouldn't be working against us, you know, we're here to to work together, a- and at the end of the day, it's for the education of our kids, right? So whatever makes the education, um, for our kids better, um, so, um. I kinda went through that quickly, I know we've been here for a for a while, um, it's in your folder if you wanna look at it more in detail.
This is early.
Yeah, and certainly, any questions now, whenever, um, but, uh. Communication and uh, building relationships, I feel like it's gonna be a big task along with the financials, I don't have a, um. I have the confidence, I know I can do the financial work, I'm I'm not worried about that at all, it's gonna take me a little time to learn the ins and outs of the system. And, you know, how Granby operates, but, you know, the challenge would be the building relationships and, um, and the communication establishing that. That line of communication between us and. I'm excited, I've been excited since, I don't even know when we interviewed, it was back in May, beginning of May, it's, that flew by like like that. So I've been excited, uh, since then, so so to actually be here and and in the job and and learning and, um, I'm looking forward, looking forward to the task. It's it's a great one, but I'm I'm looking forward to it.
We've been waiting very, very patiently.
I think it's gonna be really interesting to see, I think you hit it on the head there, is uh, how the relationship is gonna change. When certain people in the town understand that you're here five days a week and you'll be able to pick up the phone, look at any answers either that day or the next day. It's gonna make a lot of sense, right?
And I appreciate this draft, this draft, this this entry plan, I really do, um, as I read through it, I thought, boy, if we could pull this off. You know, um, you you really hit a lot of the, um, bullet points that we that we really need to tackle.
And I I originally, I was gonna, I had a thirty, sixty, ninety day plan that I had provided to everyone on the interview committee, and I was gonna use that. And superintendent said, we might wanna get into a little more detail, um, so, which was, which was great.
She knows us well already.
Yes, so, um, yeah.
Was I right?
Yes, so, um, she shared her with me and obviously I tweaked it a lot, but I, but I, from that I got the, you know, the gist of of what. Uh, the committee would like to see, um, it, again, this is a year-long, maybe a year and a half long thing, I'm not gonna get this great relationship with the town by next week.
You haven't found a million dollars?
Yeah, so, so, uh, it it'll be, it'll be a work in progress, but I I feel like everyone needs to know that we're we're on the same team. So why, why try to resist each other, um, when all we're doing is at the service to the, to the kids in in the, in the public school, so, um.
I think you're coming in at a, at a relatively, uh, good time.
I agree. It does feel like the, the the momentum is, you know, starting to change a little bit.
And we've had some really good conversations with with some of the other town committees.
Yeah, tide is changing for sure, so.
And we have this, uh, what do we call that?
Joint committee?
I call it Go Gramby. Have you really?
Yes, we have.
Go Gramby?
Yeah.
I love that.
I call it Go Gramby, I named my whole, like, all my notes.
So we have the Go Gramby Committee. Which consists of, uh, many folks that you already have on your, uh, on your entry plan, uh, to meet. Uh, including finance committee, uh, folks, um, select board, uh, members. Um, eventually town administrator and, uh, superintendent. It is coming together and I think it's gonna be an exciting conversation. One last thing, I think you said it, uh, what, does it fall, does it fall into the jurisdiction of the, uh, community relations? Probably, uh, some of the things that the community relations subcommittee will talk about and will put together. Will, will be helpful in conveying your messages to the town as well, whether it's a quick blog entry or Twitter entry, whatever it might be. Just, you know, there are some quick ways of keeping everybody informed.
And one of the big things too is is educating, um, the community a- and also the town on what actually is school finance, right? Cause it's, it's totally different than town finance. Um, a- and it's, it's kind of, um, educating them on on what it is. And when we go and ask for money, it's not just because we're, we need, you know, we're just, you know, lazy with how we spend it, we we need it, we need it for education. Um, i- it's important for us to know, like, we need to, um, contact our politicians and have them lobby on our behalf. To the state for education purposes, and that's the only way that we're really gonna grow in education is i- is if we're funded at the levels that we need to be. And it goes back to educating the town as to what school, um, funding looks like. It's totally different than town funding, and I think having that conversation with them, going to the community and educating them on what school finance is. Um, and and kind of letting them know, these are the challenges that we face as a school department. Whether what you read in the paper is true or not, these are the real challenges that we face as a school department. A- and and let them go again to our politicians, say, hey, we need more money in the state, you know, that every, every district in the Commonwealth is drastically underfunded. But still expected to provide the same, if not better, education to the students on a year-to-year basis, and it's unfair, we find a way to do it. But it it's educating everybody outside of the school finance on exactly what that is, so i- it's a big task, but, um. Um, I'll accept it and we'll, we'll do it together, so I'm I'm excited.
So was that an extension of number three or do you?
That could be five, six, seven, I'm I'm not sure. Wherever you, wherever you would like to put it, sure.
Um, I know that, I just wanted to mention this, um, we need to do our our own school committee.
Evaluation, yeah.
So we need to get that on one of the agendas.
And also, um.
And also, um, set, uh, school committee goals again.
Yep.
Yes.
And superintendent goals.
Yeah.
And so my question is, um, did we wanna do that in a workshop, or did we, um, you had the dates of the meetings.
I do.
Um, did we wanna make sure that we set aside?
Well, that's that's what we did last year, right, was a workshop?
We did.
I think that makes sense.
It's a lot to to develop, but you can get it done in one sort of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Swoop.
Should we do it in a workshop and then we vote it in in a school school committee meeting?
Right.
Yeah, because it's just, it's so dense that to do it.
Right. Because we also have to.
During a school committee meeting is just too much.
Right, and we have to evaluate our goals, the progress we made or didn't make, um.
I think that's that's, maybe next committee meeting, we should quickly talk about that, how we're gonna do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe emerst, and there are some other, uh, school committees as well, they basically open it to the commu- uh, community.
Right.
And, uh, ask for input from the community.
As far as which the which part?
Evaluation of the school committee.
Yeah, you did that, I don't, didn't we?
Oh, we did that last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You took, I remember all of the notes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, this is like a survey type of thing, they just put it out there and then.
Oh, okay, something like.
Oh, you mean like a, I don't, like survey monkey kind of thing?
Like online kind of a thing?
Yeah.
We didn't do that.
No.
But we did have, we did have some people from from the town that came in.
Yeah.
Yep.
Made comments and.
Yeah.
Yep.
So when do we wanna do that? What does the next meeting look like?
The next meeting is on the.
Six.
Yeah.
So the next meeting will have the handbags, the handbags. I did just buy a handbag, so anyway, um, the handbooks, the student handbooks, um. In my, in my mind, I had the superintendent goals, the, I thought maybe if we got ahead. In the interim, we could have done a work group, but it may be that we just, I don't know.
So right now, the only agenda item for next time is the is the hand of student handbook.
Well, that's August.
Can, I, just a suggestion, maybe we should just create a little file in our, uh, shared drive. And when o- when these ideas come up, let's just drop them there, and when we are thinking about what should be on the agenda, prioritize those and push it to the next next meeting.
Yeah, because I actually, I actually have it in a different notebook, um, it's exactly what I do over the week. Is I just make the list of things that, you know, oh, I've gotta get the school committee to consider that and talk about this and, you know.
Yeah.
Usually happens, and then I run it by Emery and then it gets posted, so, I mean, right now, it's handbooks, we probably have. The beginnings of an update for.
Budget-wise?
Yeah, budget-wise.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, by then I'll I'll have something, yep.
Um. Um, we would be doing the wellness policy, certainly, um, we would be bringing the parking policy. Did we vote on the parking policy?
Question.
Yeah, we had to read.
Oh, we would have to bring back the, um, online payment.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Um, so there, I mean, there's a few things, but they're not.
And also there's the food services, uh, stuff that we need to, you will discuss as a.
Yes.
Right.
And then bring to the school committee, is the sixth too late for that?
Well, it's a good question, and I think it is, um, so.
You think it is too late?
I I do, so I'm wondering if, um, you said we can review in committee on Friday. Um, I am wondering if, um, there is time in our schedules for the week of the twenty-third. Uh, just for s- a single vote on the, uh, awarding of the bid or rejection of the bids based on what has come in.
Twenty-third?
The week of the twenty-third, now.
I don't know. July.
Uh, yeah, what month?
Yes. Yes.
Alrighty.
Well, if she doesn't put that ask.
Um.
Looks like I'm bred that way.
I can, I can make it work.
I'll put it in, I, I can't.
Up to Wednesday.
Not, I'm just not sure.
This is which one?
Do we have Monday?
We didn't, we were only gonna have one.
Right. The twenty-third?
I may not be here.
And that's, I'm not sure that we're going to be around as well, because.
That whole week?
Yeah, we were toying with the idea for the second.
Uh, I I can let everyone know, um, mid-week this week, whether I'm gonna be here that that week.
That's fine.
I'm free.
Okay.
I can make it work.
If it's the Monday, I can probably make it work, but later in the week is not.
So.
Mike?
I'm free the whole week, the week before I'm not.
Alright, so we, we need to make sure that we have.
Form.
So the twenty, we're thinking, are we thinking the Monday? I can tell, make the Monday work.
Yes.
So you wanna say tentatively?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the only agenda item, right?
Yes.
And is that gonna be available online before we get here, so we can?
Yes.
At least think of the questions we want to have.
So what the committee will do is review, um, the bids, uh, based on the criteria that were given, uh, to the, um, in the bid. Um, and then we will, um, basically discuss and rank or score, um, and then, uh, have that discussion here.
Yeah, if you can make that available, uh, prior to, that would be helpful.
Prior. Yes.
Is there, is there more than one, or is there?
There are two.
Or two.
Did Chartwell's give us their year-end figures yet?
So I just met with Ken LaPage on. Thursday, and he talked about getting them, so I know they usually close around the sixth of the month for the previous month, so I should be getting them soon.
Alright.
But I will follow up with him.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Okay, uh, so then getting back to the school committee evaluation, I would like to have that done prior to the start of the next school year.
So you wanna talk about it the, on the sixth?
Or the twenty-seventh.
Well, if you talked about the structure of it on the twenties, on the sixth, then you could actually conduct it on the twenty-seventh?
Okay, let's do that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we can do the same thing with the, um, what was the other thing?
Superintend- and superintendent goals.
Uh, superintendent goals and, so we're not, we wouldn't have a work group, you feel like there's, we can do that during, that's fine.
Goals. And the school committee goals.
I think it's, it's manageable. And the structure on. Okay, okay.
Do you have a superintendent's report? Is there any other?
I do not.
Oh, so you don't, okay.
After all that.
After all of it.
Anything from collaborative? Okay, uh, the building committee met last week or the week before?
I believe the week before.
Yeah, it was the week before, um. Well, very quickly, we approved some change orders because there was some issues with circulation, so that needed to be addressed, and there were some needs in classrooms for. Some, uh, additional boards, uh, s- I don't remember the exact magnitude, but, uh, you know, some change order. Uh, was was discussed and approved, uh, the. The but, the project is still under budget, way under budget, uh, so when we talk about these change orders, we do not take it. Uh, lightly, but also we know that we have, we are operating within a pretty large, uh, uh, cushion. So, so that's, you know, that's pretty good, we don't know how much more of these we're gonna have, but everything's on track, we're gonna be, we're gonna be, uh. Switching things, uh, shortly, so everything's gonna be ready for the, uh, new school year, was there anything else that?
We're planning the, uh, dedication, uh, for, I believe, the week of September seventeenth, um, I believe, so.
Oh, the, yes.
Working with MSBA and and getting their, um, folks in and and sending it out.
No, we need to know that as soon as possible, because that's gonna be during the day, right?
Yes, it will be during the day.
Yeah.
Any, um, have, are there any discussions or any plans of what if there's setbacks, what you're gonna do with the first?
Right, well, they are very close to completion, so the, you know, the renovation, um, the library, they're they're on to paint and flooring, um, so there isn't.
Yeah.
Um, uh, at this point, too much they feel is gonna, you know, trip them up.
So there were a couple of tours, just to, just to have an, a personal understanding as to how things are, uh, progressing.
Okay.
And everything seems to be, uh, going well, uh, they, that's what they were doing, they were finishing many of the, uh, interior spaces, the. Um, uh. All the lockers are in, the the cubbies are in, the cabinets are in, uh, the the library was was done, which is my favorite space. Uh, over there, and it's gonna look even better probably, the computer area is done, which is, you know, glassed in, um. The play area in the back is.
Is amazing.
Is in.
Isn't it?
Oh, my god.
I'm so excited.
So, yeah, so the play area actually allows, allows the kids to go high.
Awesome, it's a kid's dream. Yeah.
I think Jim Peters called it, uh, Mount Granby or something like that.
The only elevation in East Meadow.
Yeah.
Is the playground.
So it just, it just goes up, and and it's all safe space, and it's gonna be all plants and stuff, so they're gonna be able to, uh, move around.
Yeah. I wonder, I can probably get a s- a tour as school committee, I would think, uh, so either the second or maybe.
Yeah, I would love that.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Maybe before school committee meeting, we just can't talk about anything.
Yeah.
But we can tour, yeah.
Yeah. That'd be awesome.
Cool, let's do that, can we do it next time?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Um, I believe, actually, did we just say maybe the the twenty-third, the July twenty-third, right, let me see.
Emery might not be around.
I I I I've seen it already, so I'm good.
Oh, yeah. Let me see. It just depends.
So we don't, you, so you just mentioned that they were gonna bring some more things online, that was, that was, that was my only concern, if things. That they go online with like air conditioning or stuff like that, or plumbing, all of a sudden, they, ooh, there's there's holes here, things start popping. Doesn't look like there's gonna be any need to come up with an alternative plan for the first few few days of school, if anything, right? Uh, cause that was one of my concerns earlier, and then the other question I had was, um, you just mentioned something outside or play play space?
Yeah.
I had heard that there was no playground or playground equipment for East Meadows School. Is that true, or is that?
Um, there is playground equipment, so there are, um, swings that were repurposed, um, there, um, the. I think maybe what you're hearing is that what we thought we were gonna be able to take from West Street, we were not able to take from West Street, um, it was not in good enough condition. Um, and that includes the shed as well, um, so there was talk at the committee about, um, preparing, um. The space for eventual, um, uh, playground equipment, but we have to cross that bridge once.
Yeah, currently, there is, there there is nothing that's going in there, because what was gonna be moved from, uh, Old West Street is not really in a good condition to be moved, even though. Uh, generally, we thought that it was going to be the case, they tried and it, you know, they they can't.
So if we're under budget, can't we use some of the funds to?
So that's some of the conversations, I guess, that they are still having, but i- you know, it just. What we are still looking at is, well, let's just be honest, um, what we are, what, you know, I I, in a, in a different way.
Please.
I'm guessing that some of the considerations are related to the financing of the overall project versus how do we balance it with whatever's still the gap. And we had those conversations and there seems to be some, some, uh, inclination to do that afterwards. Uh, through donations or, you know, finding some the other ways of getting the money, and the reason for that, at least, you know, the. Visible, uh, or audible reason for it is that if we do have that cushion, then the financing. Uh, of the project will be, will become easier, so we don't really want to, without thinking, throw money at everything, so it has to be a really thoughtful process, and what I mean by that. We can do two things, one, one is, uh, the initial idea, not to add any more, um, any more. To taxes, to borrow money for the last portion of the project, and also if there is anything left over, potentially really do something with that leftover amount as well. Um, if there is any, I I don't know where we are, Chris, I think, uh, is keeping tabs on that one and, uh, we'll find out. This is a small amount, so it may come back.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a, uh, a committee vote anyway, right?
It is.
I mean, that's not a unilateral decision that everybody votes.
Oh, no, no, none of these will be, if the committee says, these are the change orders, what do you say, everybody votes yes, then it's just, just like last week, then then, you know, we go and.
Mm-hmm. Right.
A- and do those, but we wanna have the meaningful conversations, uh, to see whether or not there's a different way of doing it. There are some fundraisers that are talked about that we can't do right now, because MSBA in a weird way penalizes you if you have, uh, fundraisers during the project. Even, uh, the, uh.
Grants.
The horticultural.
Grant, grant-based project that Robin talked about, she can't do it, because it's not, it's, it has to be done after the project is complete.
Not until, not until they've signed off that it's a, the project is complete. Because that money that I got for the horticultural grant can be deducted from the funding for the school.
Oh, okay.
So we wanna make sure that we, our reimbursement remains intact, so we don't, you know, we we're trying to look at all these different angles.
So, so do we have playground equipment?
Yes, there is.
For the kids when they start there, cause there are gonna be some little ones that really need some of that playground equipment, uh, for their, for their resize, and then.
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm.
Is there a way that a communication can or should go out about this, because I'm hearing all kinds of crazy weird rumors about how can a school be built, uh, the thought of a playground for the little kids?
Well, there was, it was, the the playground was part, in fact, there there were two separate playgrounds, one in the back for the, uh, older. Students and one on the side for the elementary, right, it was, that was, that's how we, so there are two, on the project, there are two separate playgrounds.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're in effect putting two different schools together, diff- two separate age groups and all that.
Right.
But to Mike's point, though, I think that's a good one, that something, something should be sent out.
Yeah, and there's actually three.
Maybe.
Yeah, that's true.
Because through the process, we realized we really wanted to keep kindergarten and first grade separate, um, and potentially second grade, um, but. Um, it's a different play experience, um, for the little ones, so.
Yeah.
Something should be sent out.
So I think that, I think the. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the point is, is the communication should be sent out, so, so people in town understand that this was thought about, there are plans in place, just, you know.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, um, wow, sorry, so, no, that's, that's, that's fine, um. Policy subcommittee, then we'll look to hear from you guys, and if, Jen, if you have any conflicts with your policy subcommittee thing, then let me know and we'll, we'll talk about it. Um, one. Thing that I was gonna mention, I forgot, so. What was I gonna say, anyway, is there anything else that we were supposed to mention?
I don't think so.
Okay, oh, uh, things that Pam mentioned earlier, uh, if we can find out through Fred and, you know, other folks.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I just looked up chapter forty and, uh, initially she looks, she looks correct.
So, so we'll, uh, we should, we should look into that.
Just in the first, first paragraph, first couple of paragraphs, but.
Yeah. Well, uh, no, we, i- it's good learning for all of us as well, but it's, it's, you know, it's, we should not just let it go.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will. Vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part Eight-Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, in an open session, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, the committee will not return to open session. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Diane Payne, a rose, an aye.
Jennifer Corrigan, aye.
Jennifer Bantos, aye.
Emery Arvin, aye.
Mike Simpson, aye.
Thank you.